Okay, we are calling this open session, open session of our regular meeting to order at six o'clock. We'll do a roll call. Do I call them? Alright, so trustee Alvarado, trustee Vargas.
President.
Trustee Maraca.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Yeah.
Trustee Maraca's here too, so we are all accounted for and present. Could we stand and have the pledge of allegiance, trustee Martin would lead us? Ready to begin? Okay. I apologize, can you hear me now? We do not have any, we do not have anything to report out from the closed session. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Move by trustee Maraca, is there a second? Is there a second? I second, so move by trustee Maraca, seconded by trustee Maraca. So, and now we're gonna introduce some very special people on our board, our student board. Oh, sorry, the land acknowledgement wasn't on the agenda today. Yes, did we vote on? You said it. Right, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's do the land acknowledgement and then, yeah, we have motion, so we need to vote. All of us, they're saying aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries unanimously. I'm gonna, I went a little bit out of order, but I'm gonna read the land acknowledgement right now. We acknowledge the Payong Kuichum, the people of the West, as the traditional land caretakers of the land on which Vista Unified School District was built, and its surrounding traditional cultural landscapes. Today, the Payong Kuichum are known as Luiseño and are made up of seven bands. La Hoya, Pala, Pama, Pachanga, Vingvun, Salavere, and Sobolva. We, Vista Unified School District, are mindful of the indigenous peoples in this place, and make our respects to Luiseño, past, present, and future. We are grateful to have the opportunity to be part of this community in Luiseño territory, and to honor their history, culture, and perseverance of spirit. Thank you, and thank you, I apologize for getting it out of order, but I'm so excited about our student board members. So now we will, yes, we now we will introduce our student board members.
Okay, thank you, president Morocco. Again, this is a really exciting time of the year. Every year, we have an opportunity to welcome some amazing student leaders to the dais. They have had a chance to go through orientation. We're really excited to have each of them, and as a tradition, we always have their principals introduce each of the board members. So if we could start with Mission Vista High School, Mr. Walden, if you could come up, sir. And then it would be best, if we could make it happen, if the board member could squeeze around with, with Mr. Walden, would be wonderful, thank you.
Wonderful, good evening, president Morocco, trustees, Dr. Doyle. It's a privilege to be here this evening to present the Mission Vista Student Board Member in Taylor Barimeta. Taylor is a servant leader on our campus, she serves as our ASB president, she's part of our student senate, has a lot of insight to the ins and outs of what's happening at Mission Vista. And I know that she's gonna take us servant leadership role into this position, providing feedback from her perspective and the perspective of Mission Vista, so welcome, Taylor.
Welcome, Taylor. One of our speaking board members actually does a presentation to the board, about three or four months in, so you'll hear from Taylor soon, in a couple of months. Alright, next, let's go to Vista High, Francisco Riley.
Alright, hello everyone, should I push this? Yes, hello everyone, thank you, and I am so excited to introduce you to Melina Sanchez. She is an exceptional scholar with a 4.11 GPA, an IB candidate, an avid student, a longtime member of our nationally recognized character education program, Character Leaders, a bilingual student with many other things on her resume, we're very happy to have her represent us. I asked her two questions, actually asked her teachers, how would you describe Melina? They said one word, brilliant, and then I asked her, what would your parents say about you? And she would, she said they would say I'm caring, so I think that sums up perfectly, we're happy to have her.
Maybe I have to run to Vista High School, Dr. Muriel.
Good evening, very excited to be here, president Morocco, superintendent Dr. Doyle, and trustees, all the way from the other side of the 78th. Ranch of one of us, the high school's here to respect the ranch with this amazing student. He actually had a tremendous footprint on our framework, so the guiding coalition when he was a rancher in Erva. He came from Lake Elementary School, now leads us at Rancho, I'm so proud of him. When I saw him and met him, we mentioned this today, I said to him, I have big plans for you. And he's standing here today, but he earned it. You will find him running across our pastures in Vista and Ocean Side as cross-country runner, and then around the track as well. You'll also find him leading our students with CSF in many different roles. He is trilingual, actually, so you'll be dying to see what it is yet, you don't have to figure that out. And he's really kind, he has big plans. I mentioned to him the work we're trying to do with our Saturday School enrichment, and he wants in, I want a tutor, I want to help. So he really just wants to help, and that's exactly what I think made him such a qualified candidate for you tonight. Welcome, Adna.
Thank you so much, folks, welcome coming in and introducing your amazing student leaders, students, welcome. You will have Murray and Altus introduced, it looks at the next meeting, Brian's not here, so we'll be, should we do an introduction frame with our next meeting? I'll hand it back to our board president.
Thank you, Dr. Doyle, and welcome new board members, this is always such a great time to meet with us. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to our public hearing, our charter renewal presentation and public hearing, Vista Springs Charter School. I'll try to read something. We will now convene a public hearing on the Vista Springs Charter School renewal petition. The district received a petition renewal, petition to renew Vista Springs Charter, and assigned certification deeming the petition being complete on August 28th, 2025. Vista Springs is currently authorized by the State Board of Education. However, because of the change in the law, it must submit its renewal petition to the local school district in whose boundaries it is located. The district commenced the applicable timelines for the petition review process. Vista Springs seeks a renewal of its charter for a five-year term commencing on July 1st, 2026, and ending on July, June 30th, 2031. The purpose of this public hearing is to determine the level of support for this petition by the district teachers and other district employees, and parents, guardians. This matter will then come back to the board for final action at a future board meeting. Representatives from Vista Springs will have, will first have an opportunity to make a presentation to the board regarding the renewal petition, and will receive a maximum time of attendance. I would now like to invite representatives of Vista Springs to come forward and vote in and make the presentation. I think that you need to bring the gathering.
I pushed to talk.
Yeah, push to talk.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, and good evening, president Morocco, members of the board, and Dr. Doyle. It's my honor to be here tonight to speak on Vista Springs Charter School located at 700 East Bobina Drive. We have been proudly serving the Vista community since 2018 as a charter school authorized by the State Board of Education on appeal, and our history in Vista extends even before that. We're a small school with a big purpose, offering families choice, you can go to the next slide, sorry. Offering families choice through three high-quality models, a dual immersion seat-based program, a hybrid three-day in the classroom, two days of homeschooling model, and a homeschool program with a learning center support option at the center. Together, these programs allow for a diverse group of students to have very alternative and personalized education. Next slide. Alright, our data shows something powerful. When our children stay with Vista Springs, they do better and better, their outcomes are stronger. We are intentional about continuous improvement. This year, we've added additional instructional supports and interventions to accelerate learning even further. It's also worth noting that in the national study by the Stanford University, the Credo Report, there's been three different Credo Reports about charter schools, and this most recent one, they identified the Springs Network as a gap-busting network, which means that we're closing the gap for students that are typically underperforming at higher rates than traditional settings. We're especially proud to be the only hybrid model, the non-classroom-based model that is listed in that list of 32 charter networks. Next slide. Alright, our mission and vision. For us at Vista Springs, it's not about what's taught, it's about how students learn. We, you teach the same state standards, we use the same curriculum in most cases that traditional schools use, but we use it differently. We are a mastery-learning-based program where students set goals, make a plan on how to reach those goals, and work intentionally towards those goals in a prepared environment. Our, each of our classrooms is prepared for standard-based learning by the students. Our students are empowered, and we use the latest brain research. We believe every student can achieve at a high, high level, and we have those mastery goals for each and every student, for each and every standard. Okay, next slide. Alright, our students represent this rich diversity. In California, 71% are socio-economically disadvantaged, 25% are English learners, 13% are students with disabilities, and we have 6% experiencing homelessness. Every day, we see students who might not have thrived in a traditional setting, and they are coming alive in ours, gaining confidence, fluency, and a love of learning. Okay, slide. Alright, so our three programs are family-based programs. Our dual immersion program is led by bilingual credential teachers, building bilingualism and biliteracy, while supporting a global perspective. Our mosaic hybrid program offers the best of both worlds. It's homeschooling with support at the school. The teacher, credential teacher, sets assignments for the two homeschooling days, and provides the heavy lift on the three days in the classroom. It's a very popular option. And then our homeschool learning center provides support for parents who homeschool five days a week in our school. These are flexible and personalized approaches. Alright, next. Okay, this is a little highlight of our, our data when we did this charter petition, our data was still embargoed, but this is the data that we have, so I'm assuming, I mean, it's unembargoed now, and the, the dashboard should be coming out very soon, so we're giving you a little sneak peek, which shows that our distance from standard improved by nearly 10 points in the LA, one point in math. While math remains our biggest opportunity, we've already implemented a new math program this year, which is having impressive results in the rest of our Springs Network. So we're eager to see those gains reflected in this year's data. Next slide. Okay, based on the preliminary data, Vista Springs is improving in all key dashboard indicators. We can see growth and improvement in every key dashboard indicator, which confirms, you know, an upward trajectory, growing, always growing, always continuous improvement. Alright, next slide. Our parents are not just participants in our school, they are partners. Our family engagement is one of our founding precepts. We host ongoing parent workshops, cultural celebrations, and volunteer opportunities. Our families are passionate advocates, and some of them are here to speak to you tonight. Our principal, there she is, Kim Bagby, is available to answer any questions you might have about school events and activities, and is excited to give you all tours of the campus at any time you want to come to visit. And we, I know we have a few weeks until the vote, so you'll have time to do that. And last slide, okay. In closing, I want to thank your staff for their thoughtful initial review of our renewal materials, and for sharing their attorney's letter of concerns in advance. Receiving that notice early allows us to address each point carefully and collaboratively. Several of the identified issues can easily be resolved with a little bit more documentation, which is great. One of the issues that cited is the same language used in the 2017 letter of denial for our school. As a point of information, our 2017 charter was denied by this body, and it was, and we were legally required by the appeal process to present the exact same petition on appeal to the state, exactly as written. So after we sent the appeal to the state, that charter document received the CDE staff's recommendation of approval, which is very rare. CDE doesn't often recommend approval. And then it was unanimously approved by both the ACCS, which is the Commission on Charter Schools, and the State Board of Education. We have operated successfully with that same structure since 2018 with strong oversight and a record of compliance. We're proud of the work we've done and the relationships we forged during this, well, seven years now, because of the pandemic. The charter terms were extended. Ultimately, we would prefer to be locally authorized, we think that's the right way, we want to work hand-in-hand with Vista. I'm a long-term Vista resident, lived here 25 years, two of my children graduated from Ranch of Wayna Vista. And we invite any of the board members, also staff, to discuss our relationships and progress with the state, our CDE charter school representative, our liaison, because they can speak to our partnership and our ethics. Thank you for your time for considering our charter renewal and your service to the students in Vista.
Thank you for the presentation. The board will now receive public input on the petition. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board, and the board shall limit the total time for public input to 20 minutes. If members of the public wish to speak regarding the charter renewal petition for Vista Springs Charter School, please approach the podium and address the board.
No, no, I mean flip on the bottom, so they don't have to hold it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It sounds like it's on.
It's good enough. Oh, maybe plus, maybe you're right.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Veronica Arenas. Soy la mamá de Michelle Osorio, ella participa en la escuela Sprint Charter School, y ella está ahí por más de cuatro años. Y pienso que la escuela pues es una muy buena escuela y que debería seguir existiendo para que los niños puedan aprender más. Es una escuela muy segura, tiene muy buenos maestros, y pues mi hija ha prosperado mucho en esos cuatro años que está. Y en la escuela también ofrecen clases de lingües, entonces ella está aprendiendo los dos idiomas ahí. Por eso yo pienso que la escuela es buena y que debe seguir.
I will be translating.
Oh, you will, yeah. You have a translator, but you have a translator, go ahead.
Okay, so this is Veronica Arenas, and she's the mother of Michelle Osorio, who's in fourth grade. She would like to have Vista Spring Charter continue because she believes it's a great school. She, Michelle has learned a lot. It's a, it's a school with amazing teachers and a really safe campus, and teachers are committed for learning, especially bilingualism, that Michelle has improved in since kindergarten. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for hearing from me. I'm the grandmother of a fifth grader at Charter Springs, and he started kindergarten during the pandemic. So I retired from a career in nursing to become a kindergarten facilitator. It was amazing. They immediately had everything in place, kindergarten started well, I was in a panic, how was I gonna do this? But he got online, and you know, within three, four weeks, they were getting in the chat, the kindergartners were getting in the chat and saying to each other, hi! And then someone else would type, hi! Hi, I'm like, oh my goodness. My son chose this school for his son because of the bilingual education. And it's really amazing, I traveled in Mexico last summer with my grandson, and I told him, we're in Mexico, you have to be advanced later, you have to speak Spanish. He was able to get and give directions, he was able to negotiate money. He reads, he writes in Spanish, I don't know if you guys know about Dogman, but they have hombre perro in Spanish, and Ezekiel reads it in both languages. In second grade, Ezekiel was diagnosed with ADHD, which was not a surprise to his family. But this school has been wonderful, every year we start the year meeting with the principal and with his teachers, and being welcome to tell what things work really well, to help him focus, to help him succeed. He has maintained high educational standing in all of his classes. Behavior is still a work in progress, but I am really appreciative of the fact that the teachers communicate with me regularly, like once a week, and tell me what things we need to focus on, and it's been doing really well for him. They also have a school counselor. Back in kindergarten, the school counselor would meet with kids on lunch break and play online games with him. And so by the time he needed to visit the counselor on a regular basis, they, they already knew each other well. Thank you.
Good evening, board, superintendent Bill, my name is Virginia, I'll be reading a letter from one of our parents, Daniel Sprout, who could not be with us tonight, to the Charter Renewal Board. I am writing to offer my wholehearted endorsement for the renewal of LaFonte's Charter. As a father of three boys currently enrolled in grades six, three, and one, I have witnessed firsthand the profound impact this school has had on their academic growth, character development, and overall well-being. From the very beginning, my wife and I were struck by the attractiveness of the teachers in a school's adaptive, in a school's adaptive curriculum. Each of our boys has unique strengths and challenges, and yet the faculty has consistently met them where they are, fostering both confidence and curiosity. The dual-language program at LaFonte has been especially valuable, equipping them with skills that will serve them in an increasingly interconnected world. What most impressed us, however, was how LaFonte navigated the unprecedented challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic. While many families were new, struggle, we knew struggle with disruptive learning, the school transitioned with remarkable smoothness. Their thoughtful planning and commitment to continuity allowed our children to remain engaged and on track, even as my wife, a physician, and I serving as the United States Marine Force officer, were both working full-time on the front line of the crisis. The stability and support the school provided during that time was critical for keeping our sons' educational journey on track. Equally important, LaFonte's emphasis on character, academic achievement is celebrated, but so too our kindness, integrity, and responsibility. As parents, we deeply value this balance in intellectual and personal growth, which is exactly what we want for our children. This holistic approach to education prepares students not only for academic success, but also for meaningful contributions to their communities. The mission of Spring Charter Schools, to empower students through personalized learning, foster creativity, and build strong relationships, is not just words on a page. It is lived out daily in the classrooms and playgrounds where my boys are thriving. For these reasons, I strongly urge you to extend LaFonte's charter so many more children can benefit as might have, respectfully, Daniel Sprout, thank you.
Good evening, board members, my name is Ruth Newsome, and I'm here as a proud member of this community, a representative of Springs Charter School, and most personally as a parent. I've lived in this community for over 20 years. My child graduated from Vista High School as salutatorian, and is now attending a federal service academy. I share that to express how deeply invested I am in this community and the success of the students here. I also have the honor of reading a letter that was written by councilmember Jeff Fox. He had hoped to be here tonight, but had a prior engagement that he had to attend. Earlier today, I had the opportunity of touring our Vista Center with our principal, and it reinforced our shared commitment to this community. At Springs, we're always asking how we can serve Vista better, and so I'd appreciate if I could read that letter from councilmember Jeff Fox. Dear Vista Unified School District Board Members, Superintendent Doyle, staff, and community members, my name is Jeff Fox, and I'm a current city council member of the city of Vista. As a resident, business owner, and employer in this wonderful city, I share your commitment to public service. In that spirit, I am writing to express my support for the approval of Vista Springs Charter School. Springs Charter School has a strong presence in Vista since the opening of their first campus in 2005. Vista Springs itself was founded and unanimously approved by the California State Board of Education in March 2018. The school offers three valuable programs tailored to meet the needs of our diverse student population, a hybrid model with three days of classroom instruction and two days of homeschooling, a five-day dual immersion program, and a homeschooling option enhanced by learning center enrichment. Vista Springs has demonstrated a consistent ability to serve some of the most vulnerable students in our community through its personalized learning approach, as well as through sound business and government practices. As they will present, Springs is considered a gap-busting school recognized by the Stanford University's Credo Report for helping close the achievement gap for underserved students. Despite being a choice school, Vista Springs maintains student demographics that reflect the broader Vista community, and is well-regarded for its family engagement, community involvement, and its excellent facility on Bobier Avenue. I believe it would be in Vista Unified's best interest to authorize this charter, which would allow for greater local oversight, foster collaboration to support student achievement, and serve as a model for partnership between the district and the charter school. I respectfully urge you to approve Vista Springs Charter School. Thank you for your time and consideration, Jeff Fox.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, I'm Debbie Daniel, I'm a board member for Vista Springs Charter Schools. I'm here to read a letter written by Reverend Dave Keen. He's the pastor at Faith Lutheran Church, Vista, California. Reverend Keen writes, "It has been a privilege to have Springs Charter School as a partner in our neighborhood, an organization clearly dedicated to the families of this community. This campus was first established in 1969, at a time when the surrounding area was a growing upper-to-middle-class neighborhood. The congregation grew rapidly, and in those years, resources flowed outward to support many different community projects. Like most places that have stood the test of time, we have seen the neighborhood change over the decades. Through these changes, Faith Vista has remained committed to serving the people around us and providing stability in the community that has continued to evolve. That is what we value so deeply about Springs Charter Schools. They serve the same passion. Springs is committed to reaching students and families who are often overlooked, providing opportunities for those who may not have the same advantages as others. The children who fill the campus today are not the privileged few of 50 years ago. They are families working hard to make ends meet, to give their children the best possible education and future. Springs Charter School meets them where they are, offering a supportive, inclusive, and empowering environment. We have seen firsthand how their leadership team invests in the students, not only academically, but personally, helping them build confidence- helping them build confidence, purpose, and a sense of belonging. In every respect, Springs Charter School has been an excellent neighbor and steward of the facilities they use. They maintain the property with care. They communicate with integrity and contribute positively to the life of our broader community. It is with full confidence that I recommend the continued approval of Springs Charter Schools. Their presence on this campus has been a benefit not only to our organization, but to the many families whose lives they touch, Dave. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Juliana Hubbell, and I am going to read in part for you just a small portion of a letter that was sent on behalf of Arthur Congo, the senior director of Southern California Advocacy for the California Charter Schools Association. He writes, "I'm writing this letter in support of Vista Springs Charter Schools charter renewal and to review some of the renewal process nuances for this particular renewal. Vista Springs has been classified as a middle-performing charter school by the California Department of Education during its most recent track publication in March twenty twenty-five. Under Education Code forty-seven six oh seven C, this designation qualifies the school for a renewal term of up to five years. We firmly believe Vista Springs meets all legal requirements for renewal by the Vista Unified School District. Additionally, he writes, "We understand that the return to regular renewal processes after a long hiatus under the new law may pose challenges, and we are committed to supporting our charter schools through this transition. Should your district have any local policies, requirements, or rubrics, please provide them to me. Our goal is to work collaboratively with you to ensure that all charter schools have the same opportunity to demonstrate their effectiveness and to continue to serve their communities. I encourage the board to visit Vista Springs ahead of the final vote and to see its academic environment and staff commitment firsthand. Thank you."
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
The public hearing of this Springs Charter Renewal Petition is now closed. Moving on to public comments, I have some hold cards. The first one is Richard, Richard Connor.
Thanks, guys. Good evening, members of the board and district leadership and board members, student board members. My name is Richard Kauk, and I'm here as a school psychologist representing my colleagues across the district and as a fellow educator and colleague to those making important decisions that shape our schools. I want to begin by expressing my respect for the district and the thoughtful work that goes into these decisions. It's important, however, to recognize the vital role school psychologists play and the consistency our positions require to best serve students, staff, and families. We are often the first line of support for students in special education who experience significant social, emotional challenges. Our work involves counseling students, collaborating with teachers, collaborating with teachers, and helping staff respond effectively to complex behaviors. These needs are not on the schedule. Challenges can arise at any moment. And having a consistent onsite psychologist provides an immediate safety net for students and staff. I appreciate the district's efforts to address the heavy workload many psychologists face. For that support to be effective, we must remain fully staffed and maintain continuity at our sites. When psychologists are moved between schools, it disrupts the relationships and systems that help support, help students feel safe and supported. School psychologists can work proactively, building systems that prevent crises or be reduced to testing machines when staffing stability are compromised. Without full staffing, the latter becomes inevitable. We are deeply committed to our students and to the district's mission. As staffing decisions are made, I urge that the importance of continuity, proactive support, and full staffing and their direct impact on students' well-being remain at the forefront. I would also like to add that when I was interviewed for this unified, one of the big draws was the the theme of relationships and the continuity and trust that can be built with consistency at a single school site. That was the draw. I really hope that that can continue. That's my goal, because when I can do that with the staff at, for example, Mission Meadows or Grapevine, that is where we see student progress. And that's where I'll leave you. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Christian Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Christian Gonzalez, and I've worked at Vista Unified for the past four years. And I've been in this profession as a school psychologist for more than twenty years. Currently assigned to Maryland Elementary and Grapevine Elementary. Before I go further, I want to share that I am part of the Vista community. I live here. My daughter goes to Casita Elementary. So I am deeply invested in my community, and I really mean that. Over the years, I've noticed over time that the needs of our students have increased. I don't know why. But what I do know is that their needs have become more complex. It's just not academically, but socially and emotionally. These needs require time, consistency, and relationship building, the very thing that becomes impossible when psychologists are stretched across multiple campuses. What I don't want to do is give an exhaustive list of what we do with psychologists, but to share who we do this for, right? For example, at Maryland Elementary, we added a new moderate severe TK, the second-grade program. Many of the students are four and five years old with significant needs. Many of them cannot communicate verbally and express their frustration through behaviors. These psychologists roll to help them find alternative ways to communicate by recommending behavioral strategies, strategies and tools, and to literally give them a voice. At Grapevine Elementary, we have a CEES program, a social, emotional, and academic support program with students with significant social, emotional, behavioral needs. Now, these students can use their words, but often not effectively. They need ongoing support to learn how to express emotions safely and stay connected to learning, needing staff to empathize and connect with them. Now, both of these schools have historically had one psychologist each. This year, they have merged two assignments into one. Keep in mind, Maryland added a modest severe program, and Grapevine serves over seven hundred students with a CEES program. I've been called by the administration from one school site to respond to student crisis, even one campus without support. This isn't about workload. It's about students and families. When parents first learn their child has a disability, it can be overwhelming and emotional, as you can imagine. They deserve clear compassion and time to support, and so do their children. I ask the board to consider the growing mental health and behavioral needs of our students and to allocate the resources that allow psychologists to serve each school effectively and fully. Our students deserve that level of support. Lastly, we teach our students to use their words, to express how they feel and what they need today. I hope I've done the same.
It's finally waste to see the BKA. Good evening, underboard superintendent, Dr. Doyle, board members, and the students. My name is Alejandro Sanchez. Tonight, I feel very honored and privileged to have next to me Alfredo Flores. I'm not sure if you can read the handouts that I was going to do by his father. But I made a research, and I didn't even know that this program exists, exists here in our school district. They call him the Air Force junior. What is it? Officer Training Corps. I was like, what is this? You know, was very surprised to hear about him, man. When I met Alfredo's father, it's like, spent almost ten years, probably nine years before he's got an accident here locally at Montevista, very close to Montevista Elementary School. This guy is a warrior. He was recognized by the school district as one of the greatest leaders in the community. They still have the year in two thousand twenty-four, in two thousand twenty-five. I think the program is sponsored by Camp Penrot. Alfredo was recognized as the highest attributes of American and supporter of the United States as a member of the Reserve Officers Training Corps. So it really lost my mind just to see this guy, what he's been through, you know, after he was killed with his father in a car accident right there. You know, went through so many surgeries over the years, just recently in two thousand twenty-five, you know, it's just amazing, you know, and his goal, his dreams is just to serve his country, and it's just so wonderful, really touched me so much, you know. So I understand that they have in a fundraiser just recently, they opened the fundraiser on October second. So I'm asking this board to support this program, because I think it's a very good asset for, not only for us, who they serve, for the community and overall.
So we're gonna make a little bit of archer here, because one of our student board members arrived, was here when we introduced our student board members. So we're gonna do this right now. So Brian.
Yes, we'll have the Dr. Miller come up to represent. Come on up, Dr. Miller. And then Brian, if you could step forward, please.
Good evening, Dr. Doyle. The student members of the board, we appreciate your flexibility. We apologize for our tardiness. I have the distinct honor of introducing you to Brian Solano Lada, your representative for alternative education for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. Brian is a Vista kid, Breeze Hill, Vista Magnet, Rancho Bueno Vista, and now Murray High School. In his spare time, he likes hanging out with the youngest ever board member in Vista Unified policy history, Miss Juliette back there, you may remember. And he enjoys listening to music, riding his bike. And we're so proud to have him represent our alt ed site. So once again, representing Mission Murray High School, Altus High School, and Miss Division's Academy, Mr. Brian.
Welcome, Brian.
We are going to go on to reports from school-related organizations, Ms. Avila, for Vista Teachers Association.
Did we have to hold it? No, no, okay, that's great. Improving every day. Good evening, board members. Dr. Doyle, welcome student board members and the community members that are here tonight. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight to show how deeply we care about the direction of our district and the importance of moving forward with true collaboration. We are here this evening for two reasons. First, to express our appreciation that we reached a tentative agreement so early in the year. A clear sign that when we work together, we can achieve meaningful results for our students and staff. I'm also proud to share that our members ratified this tentative agreement with an overwhelming ninety-two point one approval percent. That strong vote of confidence shows that Vista educators are ready to continue building a future rooted in partnership and progress. Looking ahead, we must unite to address the challenges that lie beyond our district. The proposed federal education cuts would have been a, would have a devastating impact on Vista. A total loss of nearly twenty-five million dollars if these cuts happen. I'll say that again, so the public at home can hear Vista could lose twenty-five million dollars if these proposed federal cuts happen. And that is including eight point seven million dollars in special education funding. Eight point seven million dollars. These cuts would hurt the students who need our support the most. As we heard tonight from our dedicated psychologists, these positions are not expendable. When we talk about leaving positions in the parking lot, we must remember that behind every position is a student who depends on that service. The loss of just a few psychologists has already created gaps in support for our most vulnerable students. Now is the time for all of us educators, administrators, and community members to stand together, to advocate together, and to ensure that every student in Vista Unified continues to have the resources and the care they deserve. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
California School and Arts Association, Mrs. Ramos.
Good evening, board superintendent, student board, and my CSDA siblings in the house. I want to start out with a positive note, a shout out. Back in August, part of our CSEA report, we talked about the need for a district-wide drill to prepare all of us in case of a natural disaster. We experienced an earthquake in April during school hours. And so the issue was, what happens if we're not able to go back to our site? What's the next plan? And so I wanted to just shout out to the district by today practicing the California Shakeout and really emphasizing next steps, which was focusing on the internal communications. I will say there was a difference, a change, and a positive change. And so CSEA will be providing feedback to the district about their experiences, but also ways or the gaps that are still missing that we need to close and improve on. The next topic I want to discuss is a job classification study. This is an ongoing topic that we brought to the board to keep you on the loop. A little background information on this. Every four years, our job descriptions need to be up to date. We have in Vista Unified over a hundred job classifications or job descriptions for school support staff. Many of them had not been up to date. And so we are getting close to finalizing it and getting them approved. So we brought up our CSEA forums, where we gave our members one opportunity more to provide their input on the changes or updates to job descriptions before it's put up for a vote. There's a need to move this process going forward, because the next step after job descriptions are updated is a compensation study in which we will find out how competitive are we with neighboring school districts. And we want the best and qualified staff to come work for Vista Unified and work with our students. Let's see, the other thing I wanted to talk about or bring to the board's attention too is the the use of artificial intelligence in the workplace. This school year, the district introduced AI guidelines for students in the August eleven community update. And the first time I heard about the word ChatGPT was actually during a school board meeting by the past assistant superintendent, Dr. Homestead. When I heard that, I was like, ooh, we might start talking about this. I was wrong. We haven't been discussing this. Or the district hasn't proposed any guidelines on how to utilize this technology tool in the workplace. And so in alignment with the value of collaborations, CSEA wants to partner and collaborate with the board and the school district to have these conversations. We have guidance for students. Now, what are the guidelines that we as staff need to keep in mind to ensure privacy and appropriate use of any type of AI technology tool that's being implemented in our workplace? So that we want to be part of those discussions. It can be in the form of a committee or maybe a district framework, but we want to be part of that. We are part of, we are a stakeholder, and we need to be part of these discussions. And so whichever method the board decides to take, it's important to remember that technology should enhance human work and not replace it. And then lastly, on the topic of collaboration. In two thousand nineteen, when the last bond was passed, CSEA was nowhere in the discussion. We weren't even in the loop about what type of support the board needed to spread the word out in our community. And I just want to point it out to this school board. Out of the one thousand two hundred and sixty-five school support staff, classified employees in Vista Unified, seven hundred and sixty-one of them are Vista residents. So we are a mighty force. Please include us in these conversations. We can support the passing of a bond if you just simply include us. Thank you.
By the way, we do not have any electric work, so we're moving on to item eight A, modify and approve purchase orders. Is there?
Good evening, good evening, board members, student board members, for being here. I'm here representing Dr. Mosher. As you know, he's taking some time off. And I hope I can help you understand the items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chata. We have all utmost confidence in you. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the purchase orders, is there any questions? Okay, shouldn't we move to approve it and then go on? We could do, we could do. I think he says questions for her, but if we want to, if we want to have, I don't think this session, did you have a question for Mrs. Chata? Or did you have a question for the board? Okay, so there's no questions. All in a motion to approve item eight A. I move to approve item eight A. Moved by trustee Alvarado. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Markov. Any further questions or any further discussion? Same, I'll call for the vote. All was ever said ayes. Student board members, do you have any questions on this side? Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? One exception, I am saying because I have a conflict of interest on this, I actually own some stock, a very small amount of stock in Costco. And while that isn't actually a conflict, I do not want to give the appearance of impropriety, so I have seen from this vote every moment. So, okay. Moving on, we approve resolution twenty-six eleven to establish a special reserve other than capital outlay project fund.
Would you like, I'm going to do a quick review of the purpose of this?
I will leave it up to my colleagues, do you want a quick review or are we doing? Should we go for the student board members so they can understand it? Okay.
Maybe a minute review of the purpose of it.
Absolutely, so we are bringing this item to a board today as a resolution to establish the creation of a fund for special reserves other than capital outlay. That means that this fund would have money set aside that can be used for any other purpose than investment in capital investment, which is like building, construction. So that's the purpose of the fund, we did a presentation last board in September, and today we're bringing this item back so that the board can decide on the resolution and allow us to establish the fund, we are not establishing funding level or any transfer of monies into the fund just yet.
Do you have any questions, student board members? Regular board members, any questions? Same then, I will entertain a motion to approve item eight B.
I move to approve resolution twenty-six dash eleven.
Moved by trustee Alvarado, is there a second? Second, seconded by trustee Markov. All those, any further questions or discussion, student board members? Okay, same then, I'll call for the vote, all of us, if there ever say aye? Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Moving on, AHC, the approval for appointment of new members to the vacant positions on the Citizens Law Oversight Committee. Is there any discussion and questions on that? Students, do we want to give a quick? Over, for our student board members, just very quickly.
All right, so the district holds a committee for, we have a bond, and the bond brings out the construction for the district. The district holds a committee that talks about the bond, that goes over the financials of the bond, the construction itself. This committee is made of several members of the community. We have two vacancies, and today we are bringing to the board for their appreciation two candidates to fill those vacant positions. Any questions?
All right, thank you. This is a, this is part of oversight, these are public dollars that are paid for by taxpayers. So we have citizens that help, and we're citizens too, by the way, we're all part of the oversight. And so they make sure that we're spending the money, the waiver's supposed to be spending the money, and that we're not paying people off that shouldn't get paid off. So basically, so, okay. I, anything for the questions or discussion from my colleagues? Same then, I'll entertain a motion to approve item AHC.
I move to approve the appointment of a new member to the vacant positions on the Citizens Law Oversight Committee for a two-year commitment for a measure O.
Okay, moved by trustee Alvarado, is there a second? All second, seconded by trustee Markov, any further discussion? All those if there ever say aye? Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight D, pre-resolution twenty-six twelve to piggyback on the NASCO master agreement twenty-three oh six ordered to Dell, and Mrs. Chata, would you please explain for our student board members what it would be back to?
Absolutely, so what happens is when a school district, anywhere in California, or sometimes even outside of the state, goes into contract with a company or in, let me pull back a little bit. When we enter into contract, or we are trying to enter into contract for a large purchase, we have to go through a process which we call formal bidding process. The piggyback move allows us to go into the back or piggyback on to a bid, a formal bid that has already been held by other districts. That also allows us the best pricing possible for the items that we are looking to acquire, could be an item, could be a service.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, our student board members, any questions from our regular board members? Okay, trustee Martin.
In the board packet, under recommended action, about halfway down, it says to approve the resolution blah blah blah, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent Business Services to execute the contracts in lieu of the board. Why?
You want, did you want to answer it?
I am, I don't think.
You want me to answer it?
Yes.
So that's, that's just after the board approves the amount of money that we've identified, then that would be the go-between, so we can expedite the purchases. So it's money that you're already aware of, we would just, you would just, in this case, Dr. Locher would move forward with expediting the purchase, that's the purpose.
Is this a one-time purchase, is this multiple times?
Well, it's a piggyback, so it could be multiple purchases, it depends on what the item is. I could pull up the piggyback and tell you. Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, this is computers, so more likely than not, it would be more than one purchase over time.
Right, I believe it's Chromebooks, right?
Down, we have a contract with them, so trustee Martin, it would likely be more than one purchase over the course of the year. But again, this is money that was already identified in the blueprint that the board has already had a conversation about and approved.
What that allows us is really to get the best pricing possible.
I do understand that, but I'm also being told that we are heading towards insolvency in three years. And so my concern is that having us cut out of this decision doesn't allow us to slow the roll, so to speak, on spending. Whether we need the Chromebooks and, of course we do, but how often and how many we're looking at making cuts, I don't like being cut out of decisions when it comes to financial matters.
So we can absolutely inform the board prior to any, any agreement being done in the Friday letter, so you're aware of it. And if the board chooses, we can bring items back in the event that the board wants to have a conversation about it, but this is, these are the actions and services we identified in the strategic plan that you approved.
I understand that, but things have changed since the strategic plan, and now that we're going into insolvency, I'm very concerned. Also, the fact that some of these may have to be stopped and, and slowed. I'm also concerned that if they come to us in the Friday letter, they'll be already in PO status, purchase order status, which makes it even more difficult for us to claw back. So my whole thing about this is I don't want that last part to be in here, I want us to be able to make these decisions along with the needs.
So are you gonna, so would you like to entertain a motion that we approve it? Well, first of all, I'd like to hear from my other colleagues, is there, is there any other, any other feedback on that?
Yeah, Dr. Dell, there's a, there's been some data that's shared in the past, and the rotation of how we've switched that technology for both staff and students over periods of time. I think it'd be helpful to see that, and you know which schools are up for renewal for the next year. But also looking at the background information that was presented in the past, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we can actually provide you a report on how we do it, it's basically shifts based on the sites and the needs of the sites. But what we can do, if you approve this, because this is just a piggyback agreement, is we can bring back the first purchase and agendize it. And I think that's what you're asking for, trustee Martin.
I'm asking for us to slow our spending, that's what I'm asking for. And if that means that we have to skip a year, then I want the board to have the ability to do that. I want us to be in charge of the spending that is happening, the POs this month were five million dollars. That, that blows my mind when we're in this financial situation so far. And now to see that we're just gonna be buying more, purchasing more computer equipment, I understand, but we also have made a very concerted effort of getting away from screens. And so I'm questioning this in many different ways. I either need more information, or I'd like that portion removed, or we can postpone this until next month, which I understand is a piggyback, so we might lose our opportunity, but I'm not comfortable with this.
Anyone?
I have a question for this piggyback, what is the estimate to be spent this first time that we purchase? And how much of it, how does it compare to our annual budget of three hundred and sixty-nine dollars?
I can bring the, I can bring the exact amount that we put in the blueprint for you in the Friday letter. I don't have those numbers.
Yeah, it would be hard for me to give you the exact number now, because this isn't a purchase, it's just the piggyback agreement.
It's to allow us to get really a better price right now.
Right.
Versus, yeah.
If I may, maybe I could offer a solution. If we just changed, took that sentence out, how would that impact the piggyback agreement? It would just mean that we would have to keep renewing the piggyback every time we wanted to make a purchase.
No, no, I wouldn't do that, that's, you can remove that statement if you feel comfortable, we would simply then bring back the purchase to you to approve before it's purchased, and I think that's what trustee Martin is trying to say.
Okay.
Unless I missed something, did I miss something?
No, you were, you just about hit it on the head right there.
Yeah, you all know Vince, so Vince, if you have any nuances to it, we just want to make sure we follow along.
Just to clarify, a piggyback is just an ability to buy off of a particular contract.
You're not purchasing the big time.
So every time they purchase, they have to actually create a new purchase order that will come to the board for either ratification or approval. So that, you'll see those as needed throughout the year. So there's certainly time to either approve or disapprove specific purchases that are connected to this piggyback agreement.
I think the question is about having Dr. Locher act without board approval, is, if we take that sentence out, that shouldn't impact it?
It wouldn't, we would simply bring the item back to you, and you would, before we purchase anything, you would have a chance to deliberate on that item.
It would follow whatever the, whatever the practices are that you're currently doing with your purchase orders would follow that same practice.
Which brings me to a new, you just reminded me of a new problem with POs. When I first got on the board and I tried to go through the POs and try to slow some of the spending or question some of the spending, and so over and over again, these POs have already, they're already POed. So now you're saying that, that, these purchase orders, that these will come to us as purchase orders for ratification. I want to be able to approve or disapprove, not ratify. And will that happen?
Okay, so that would have to be a different topic, and we'd be happy to agendize that topic, that's not this topic. So we have to agenda as a separate topic, which is the procedure for purchase orders, and we can agendize that topic, but we can't talk about that tonight, because that's not agendized. We can talk about the topic at hand, and I've addressed, I've addressed your concern on it. I do want to go on record as saying, these are items our team has determined are necessary for the school district, but we're more than happy to justify the purchase of those items, because I think that's what you're asking for.
I'm also very concerned with the amount of money that we continue.
I understand your point.
So I would, I would be satisfied if that sentence in lieu of board, all of that is taken out.
And so if you make a motion to that effect, we can do a second and discussion and vote on it.
This would be a rider.
So you, but the motion, I believe, would be here.
There's already a motion.
No, I don't believe there's a motion on the forum. No.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve eight D with the elimination of the final clause and authorize the Assistant Superintendent Business Services to execute the contracts in lieu of the board.
Okay, is there a second?
I just want to offer a friendly amendment, the final clause would be section four, so maybe section three? For the resolution?
I'm sorry, I'm looking in the, I'm reading in the recommended action, so.
If you go to the resolution, section three is what I think it says the Assistant Superintendent Business Services is hereby authorized and directed to do any unsold things to execute and deliver all documents which they may in consultation with legal counsel deem necessary or advisable in order to consummate this transaction in other ways carry out give effect and comply with the terms and intent of this resolution, but then there's section four that says this resolution shall be effective as of the date of the adoption, so it's section three, I believe.
I think you're correct.
Thank you, yes, section three.
So do you want to restrict the motion so that our secretary can get it correctly? Me?
No.
Trustee, trustee Martin.
Okay, I want to make a motion for eight D with, for approval of eight D with the elimination of section three.
Okay, great, is there a second? A second? Any further discussion?
So if you eliminated all of section three, every single time we need to purchase computers, it's going to come back in the board as a discussion agenda item?
That would be correct. But you are approving the piggyback, so we can move forward with setting up the conversation and bringing back potential contracts.
And then we purchase computers every single month, or whatever, what's our timeline like?
Well, again, we'll put in the Friday letter the rolling calendar we have for replacement of computers. The answer is there are computers being replaced on a daily basis, it's a huge district, so, but not large quantities. My understanding, if Brian corrected my rights, that this is for large quantities, is it correct?
Yes. So every single month, we potentially be talking about buying computers on the.
It's possible. For large, disprove, what's the purpose of piggybacks?
Piggyback allows us to be more competitive, so just get a more competitive pricing. Imagine like a bunch of districts getting together instead of just one district trying, so the buying power is exponential.
So we're never paying more, it's always going to be.
You're going to do less, less.
Yeah, this is, this is a bid that was formally done by another governmental agency, and they got a good price for those computers, for Dell computers. And so then they also went into their, their proposal that was accepted that other districts, and they had to name all the other districts in the state, would be allowed to order off of that particular contract. And so now it gives really, you know, the economy a scale to, you know, to when that's awarded now, and so all districts can actually use that and save money versus having to go out and bid and maybe not bill school twice.
So what are the negatives of a piggyback contract?
There aren't any, well, first of all, the other positive is we don't have to take staff time and effort to go out and do a whole request for bids, that that's a whole process unto itself, which takes time and manpower to do that. So this is somebody else has already done it, they've done all the work, and we get to reap some of the benefit.
And for this specific piggyback contract, how much time would you say is that I'm going to give it?
Quarter. Kevin, what do you have?
We have our director.
Quickly, can I release the students that appear to get community credit?
Students, you'll actually, I said through the back door, and then we'll have a teacher sign you off outside of the room, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, it's late, that's the time, so. Sorry, we normally take it right during this time, but we're right in the middle, we've got a motion. Okay, quarter. Or, let's move on to.
Kevin, you were going to explain.
Sure, I believe the question, trustee Vargas, was how much time was spent? On the piggyback, so the time being saved would be if we were to go out to bid as opposed to piggybacking the existing state contract. So if we were to go out to bid, it could be a month-long process before we have a contract in place to make the purchases. The ability to utilize the piggyback cuts out that process, and allows us to utilize that pricing effectively tomorrow.
But if we do this like every single month, you're like not spending like three hours, five hours, ten hours, you're just.
I'm sorry, can you clarify?
If you're, if you're having to vote on this every single month, you're not spending an outrageous amount of time to research to.
No, again, the piggyback is, is the ability for us to utilize the pricing, so I find it to be in the best district that we have the option there, we have this pricing available to us in need.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or discussions? Same then?
Did we get a second?
Trustee. Yes, no, we did not get a second, right? We did.
Vice President Martin motion, and President Docos second.
Oh, that's right, yes, thank you, okay.
And I, before, I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page here, that this is a resolution for the piggyback, which will remain in effect. And all that we're asking now is that further purchases come to us and we say, okay, yea or nay, that's it, right?
Exactly. That's correct, that's how I am. That's correct. That's how I understand it too. Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Oh, oh, uh, student board members, any questions or comments? Go ahead.
Uh, just to clarify on the definition of trustee Martin used the word PO on the.
Purchase.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um, any further discussions, questions? Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to add that I think that um upgrading our Chromebooks is something that's good and it would potentially benefit like future students. Um, obviously it's not going to benefit us because we're graduating this year. I do have a young brother at Vista Magnet and I think that um Chromebooks being upgraded would be very good for their education, but I do think that we're trying to stray away from requiring so much screen time and especially the toll that it takes on students' mental health and stuff. Um, and I do think that purchasing Chromebooks often would be a little bit bad for our budget, especially the fact that we're cutting down already, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Taylor. Okay. Yes, okay. So seeing any further, any more questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, do we want to?
We'll do eight E or should be.
Okay, let's do eight E and then we'll take a break. Okay, eight E and F. Yes, they're quick. Hopefully they're quick. Uh, through resolution number twenty six thirteen needed, uh, to identify budget reductions needed for the year. Okay. Does anybody need a refresher on this or do we want to give a quick summary for student board members?
Absolutely. So this resolution goes together with the following, the item following that one. It's basically in order to be able to accomplish the negotiations that we just entered into with the Vista Teachers Association. What kind of change in our budget will need to happen to accommodate the negotiation, the increase in cost?
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, um, is there, anybody have any questions from Ms. Lachado at this point? Student board members, do you have any questions? No? Okay, trustee Alvarado, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Okay, any further? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Martin, please. Thank you, trustee Martin, has a question.
I'm going to be using notes because of the serious number of items that we have on the agenda tonight. So I'm going to be reading from my notes regarding this. Uh, Dr. Doyle likes to point out that he works at the pleasure of the board. This is true. We have one employee and it is him. But what is also true is that this agenda item comes to the board with a recommendation to approve or disapprove that any recommendation comes to the board to disapprove or approve from Dr. Doyle and the leadership team. This is our only source of information. Seeking information from district office employees other than Dr. Loser or Dr. Doyle is not encouraged. However, having been an employee in this district for decades gives me the background of information and a range of documents that I've collected over the years. Regarding this resolution to cut one, uh, I'm sorry, thirteen point one million dollars from the budget over the next two years is a self-inflicted crisis under, under the leadership of Dr. Doyle with the assistance of Dr. Loser to explain. The district has a reserve account, a portion of which is a three percent minimum required by the San Diego County Board of Education. In twenty twenty eight, Dr. Loser predicts that we will fall below the three percent minimum. We will become insolvent as a school district. The county board of ed now wants the assurance that the Vista board will make these cuts to bring our district back to three percent. Thus the resolution. Again, self-inflicted. Here are some, here's some information from you, for you. In September, every year, the district makes a calculated projection of what the year's ending balance will be. Four times a year, the district has to submit a budget, the budget data to the state of California. These are referred to as the actuals. Let me provide you with the projections and the actuals for the first four years of Dr. Doyle's time as superintendent. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, September ending balance projection, four point three million. Actuals, eighteen point nine million, a difference of fourteen point six million into the reserves. Twenty one, uh, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, September ending balance projection, negative thirteen point eight million. Actuals, a positive twenty nine point three million, a difference of forty three point one million into the reserves. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, September, ending balance projection, one million. Actuals, fifty eight point five million, a difference of fifty seven point five million into the reserves. Twenty three, twenty four, September ending balance projection, negative fourteen million. Actuals, a positive twenty one point five million, the difference of thirty five point five million. The total of this is approximately a hundred and fifty million dollars. Compiled over four years. Money that should have been used on our students. And now we're being told that we're going to be insolvent and the reason is is that the reserves are now down to approximately eighteen million. On July first, twenty twenty four, we had one hundred and forty three million dollars in the reserves. Fifty eight unrestricted, eighty five restricted. I spoke about it here at this dais right there, right at the podium. And now, as of the September actual, September eleventh, twenty twenty five, we have approximately eighteen million. Where's that money? Where is that money? I've asked and I've not gotten a lucid response. I've gotten a lot of different responses, but not where it is. However, we have a brand new school being built. It's beautiful. It's going to be state of the art. And congratulations to the Bovier community. They are going to have a beautiful, beautiful school. But it should have been cut down a little bit. It's right about now at a hundred and seven million dollars. And now we're going into insolvency in twenty twenty eight. This is a self-inflicted wound. I'm furious about this. This is not proper use of taxpayer money at all. We owe it to our taxpayers to make sure that we stay solvent. We owe it to them to make sure that we budget properly. When we had the budget process, we went through the LCAP. That's twenty percent of the budget. I asked for a budget. We ran out of time because it had to be submitted to the county. This is all self-inflicted. Under the leadership of Dr. Doyle with the help of Dr. Loser, and I'm sorry. But I can't approve this. I don't know what they're going to do because it has to be, but I do have one suggestion. There's twenty, there was twenty eight million dollars in books and supplies. They spent half of it. There's approximately fourteen million dollars left. The district is going to say, well, we have to use that somewhere else. Well, you know what? I say, let's put that in the reserves for year three, so we don't go insolvent. And in the meantime, let's get serious about not buying all this stuff. Five million dollars in the POs this month, this month alone. And if you looked at them, and I did, sixty two thousand went to cell phones. And two weeks ago, I asked if we had cell phones in this district for employees and Dr. Doyle told me no. Transportation, grounds, maintenance, CNS, cell phones. I know sixty two million or sixty two thousand dollars isn't going to save us, but come on. So I, I'm not trusting right now at all. I'm also really concerned with the amount of money that we're saving here. So again, congratulations to the Bovier community. I do mean that. It's going to be a beautiful school for the other elementarys. I don't know what to say.
Thank you. And Liz?
I just want to clarify for the community who's listening. We're talking about budget reductions from the general fund. And those budget reductions are to pay for the negotiated salary increase with our teachers association. But if you're going to talk about Bovier, that's money from bond money. It's distinct, it's different. So to conflate it is disingenuous and it's, it's giving the impression that we are mismanaging our money and you can only spend a dollar once. We want to take care of our employees and compensate them to the fullest ability. But once again, you can only spend a dollar once and as far as what the prior boards have decided on how to prioritize, um, measure LL using the long-range facilities master plan, that's what we use. That's our true north and that's what has to be done. So it's not fair to try to put it all in one, um, pot because it's not. There's a budget one-on-one.
Excuse me, but if you're saying a hundred and seven million dollars came out of the LL money for Bovier, then where's the hundred and forty three that was in the reserve?
Okay, and that's not on the agenda? Well, I bet it is though, so.
Yeah, if I could point out one thing that was mentioned, you know, the reserves, twenty one, twenty two, there was twenty nine million. Y'all, for the first time ever, our government in the pandemic invested a record amount of money. The doctor, Doyle, that me, that any educator out in the room had no control over. Do we need that? Absolutely. Is it investments that we're supposed to spend over time? Yes, and we have spent them over time. These funds actually expired this year. Vista Unified is not alone in making these cuts. Ninety five percent of school districts around California are in declining enrollment, meaning that ninety five percent of school districts are going to have to like figure out their budget and make reductions. And with that being said, you know, we are looking at, you know, I think a budget that is going to give our employees a raise. We're going to have that discussion next. Paying our employees better salary is a good thing, not a bad thing. I don't shy away from those conversations. But at the same time, yes, we should be looking at our own budgets and where we need to explore. We have asked Dr. Doyle to come back and bring back land budget items, but ultimately we approve the budget. We get to dictate that. And I look forward to having those conversations in the future. Uh, but Dr. Doyle, you, can you talk about the a hundred and forty three million dollars that keeps getting mentioned? I know it was something that was brought up in the campaign cycle. Like, I don't think you're hiding a hundred and forty three million dollars under your pillow, but you know, can you please explain that for the board?
Just for the record, I never said he was hiding it under his pillow. I'm just asking, where is it?
So this is a very, very complex conversation, so I'm not going to be able to answer it tonight. If you would like us to come back and do a very detailed presentation of some of the numbers that were thrown out tonight, the many of the numbers that's thrown out are simply not accurate. We go through a budget development process that actually has to be run through the San Diego County Office of Education to ensure that we're following the process appropriately and we're being one hundred percent transparent with all of the funding. It is a very complex process that's managed by the state of California. And again, we do it three times a year, do our budget development processes and we share it with the board, get feedback from the board, and then we make decisions based on that. It is complex, so the, how we arrived at the reserves and then how we arrived at the unaudited actuals is a complex process. But we'd be more than happy to walk you through it. We do not have a hundred and forty million dollars in reserves. We never did. Vince, is there anything you wanted to add to that? Do you have a lot of experience in this area?
Well, the only thing I'll, the only thing I can add to this conversation is the, uh, the word reserves is sort of a misnomer. Uh, what you're actually talking about, I believe, is the ending balances. And the ending balances are different than the reserves. When we talk about reserves for economic uncertainties and things like that, that's a set aside of like the three percent or the five percent uh for, uh, you you know, for, for future unknown things that could, that may happen, those, that can have the uncertainties. The, the, the actual dollars that you're seeing were actually explained in your unaudited actuals because you could see the revenues and the expenditures and those uh ending balances going down each year. So those have been spent and those, those, uh, they've been spent on things that were inside those prior year budgets. So at, at this point, uh, we're just trying to project based on the, you know, uh, increase in salaries and benefits. Um, how much more will need to actually save or cut out of the budget uh in order to be able to afford those increased costs? So I know you've already in, uh, approved some resolutions that have started to take effect back in June with SERPs, uh supplemental early retirement programs, uh, which basically will, uh, allow through attrition, uh, some positions not to get replaced because of declining enrollment and needs. So I think, uh, you know, bringing this forward to a, a new meeting to get the explanation fully made and maybe graphically shown. Yeah, would be a good solution.
Well, and the items you have before, the item you have before you right now is really twofold. It's to address the commitment we're making for the next item, which is an increase in salary and benefits. But secondly, it's to continue to address the declining enrollment we're faced with as, as are ninety five percent of all the other school districts in, in the state. And as trustee Vargas pointed out, one of the things that makes it a little bit more complex right now is our one-time funding that we were given as a result of the pandemic and exiting out of the pandemic has now sunsetted. So it will feel more from a cut perspective as it is with all the other school districts because we've expended our one-time funds or are nearly expended with our one-time funds.
I'd like to see a explanation of, um, first of all, I did get these numbers from the actuals. And secondly, I'd like to see an explanation next month on the hundred and seven million dollars and where that came from for the Bovier elementary. I'd also like to see where the um, supposed a hundred and forty three million that was in twenty twenty four, where that went.
We'd be more than happy to explain that to you and the entire community at, at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any further? I, I feel, well, the only thing I want to, I want to ensure, we have to make these budget cuts. And some of it is like will heal itself. Fewer students mean fewer expenses. So some of those are going to go down, but I'm concerned about student outcomes. And, um, uh, uh, the latest data that we have from the state of California, we are spending an average of eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty four stu-, twenty four dollars per student in this district. Our English language proficiency is the average is thirty nine percent. It goes down to thirty four for Hispanic students. When it comes to math, our average proficiency in math is, uh, thirty two percent for all students. And that goes down to twenty nine, I believe it is, twenty five percent for Hispanic students. I want to make sure that we are spending the money, what little money we have. I want to make sure that we are doing it to increase student outcomes. That is critical to me, so, um, that's all I have to say about that. Is there any further discussion, questions?
Yes, um, if we don't agree to these budget reductions, what happens next with the county?
We will becoming solvent, um, based on the next item. Part of the next item, and I want to emphasize the fact that the county has revised the cost, that has reviewed the costs involved in the negotiations and they have also already issued a letter that without the reductions, we are not solvent.
So either we solve it or the county solves it for us by tasting fire. Is that correct, Dr. Doyle? That would be accurate, but, um, more, more specifically, we simply wouldn't be able to move forward with the agreement at the rate.
We would have to rescind both time.
Okay, all right. Any further questions or comments? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution number twenty six dash thirteen.
I move to approve resolution twenty six dash thirteen.
Hey, uh, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, moved by trustee Alvarado, seconded by trustee Vargas. Any further discussion, student board members, do you have anything to say? And regular board members. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Uh, one, one, uh, one nay, uh, any abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries four to one. Thank you. Uh, moving on. Should we take a break? Okay, let's take a ten minute break. Sorry. Sorry. Okay, uh, we're back in session. Um, so item eight F, approve and ratify the tentative agreement for the. Is that where we're at? Yes, yes. Approve and ratify the tentative agreement for the twenty twenty five twenty six reopeners agreement between Vista and the Vice School District and the Mr. Teachers Association. So um. Ms. Ambrose, would you like to give a brief overview about this issue for student?
I would love to give a brief overview. So we are looking at tonight, item F is what we call a tentative agreement or a contract agreement. For one year out of three years of a teacher's contract. So we have classified employees that have a contract and we have certificated employees that have a contract. They, they go for three years, but each year you can do what we call reopeners. Where you look at salary and benefits and a couple of articles. Every third year, you do, you can look at the whole contract and you can bargain and make changes. That's where you. Kind of work back and forth to see kind of um, best practices that you want in the contract or salary increases and those things. So this, we did about five, five articles. And um, a tentative agreement on salary increases, benefit contribution increases. And some other language just around items that we both sites thought were important. And next year, the whole contract's open. So this was just kind of year. Three, and then next year we get to do all of it.
And, and our classified um, employees are like our bus drivers and our um, and our CNN, like uh, food service. And instructional aids, and then our certificated are teachers. And counselors.
Counselors, psychologists, yeah.
Right, and so now we've reached, uh, that, we've reached an agreement with our union. Which is called tentative agreement and it will become an agreement once the board approves it. So, okay, that's fair. Okay, so does anybody have any questions? Student board members, any questions? Uh, regular board members, any questions? Okay, uh, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve item eight F, the tentative agreement.
I move to approve eight F.
Okay, movement trustee Alvarado, is there a second?
Second.
Second, if I trust you, Markov. Any further questions? Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so item eight G, our team civics professional services contract. Okay, so um. Did. Uh, anybody have any questions to? Okay, so. Do you want to explain to the student board members there?
Yes, before you explain, this is a follow-up to a conversation we have with the board two meetings ago. So this is the, the same item, Anna will go over the purpose of it, but for the purpose of the board, this is the follow-up. To the item we talked about two weeks ago.
Right, so this item and the following item is really regarding um. The feasibility of. A bond study or like. You wanna bring, if you wanna do construction, like you have the Bobbiere school going right now and. With uh, trustee Alvarado mentioned, we used separate funds. They come from election, elected bonds, so the, the community vote. Or yes or no on a bond. And we have uh, one currently, we are looking at the feasibility of a new bond. And both items are contracting with experts that we're gonna look. On um, if the voters. What are the voters thinking and also if, how much money, if the bond issuance would be feasible for the district? So that we can proceed to, with construction or modernization to schools other than Bobbiere now. As you guys know, Vista High was finalized recently. And so we can move forward with construction. But that's the intention of those two items.
Do you have any questions? Okay, good discussion, uh. Okay, does someone, uh, well, okay, go ahead. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Eight G.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so moved by trustee Markov, seconded by trustee Alvarado. Is there any further discussion? Okay, trustee Martin.
Um, again, because of the seriousness, I'm gonna be using notes. As trustee, I have a responsibility for the education of seventeen thousand students. I also have a fiduciary responsibility, a fiscal responsibility, a financial responsibility to our taxpayers and homeowners. So let me be very clear and transparent. Because of Dr. Doyle's leadership and usage of the LL bond funny money, I cannot. And I will not support a bond exploration if Dr. Doyle remains superintendent of Vista Unified. The infrastructure in Vista Unified is old and the spending is essential. Some of our school sites are forty, fifty and sixty years old. Infrastructure is not flashy. But it's critical. Let me give two examples of what I believe were at the very least mismanagement of taxpayer homeowner LL bond funds. If you follow the Vista Press and online uh, news. You would have seen on August twenty first, twenty twenty five, um, article regarding the ribbon cutting. At one of our sites with the completion of two classroom buildings. According to this article, twenty four percent of all the LL bond funds went to the one site. Twenty four percent, just under fifty eight million dollars. Twenty four percent. That's a quarter of the bond. To one site. As a teacher, I attended the early LL bond forums. At no time did I hear the community ask for twenty four percent of all funds to go to one site. At a time of declining enrollment, was this a quality leadership decision to spend that much money at one site? With respect to the needs of our other school sites, I have to say no, it was not. This decision took away the opportunity of LL bond funds to be utilized at other school sites with desperate infrastructure needs. I have a second example. At one of our oldest school sites, infrastructure needs were critical. Sewer, roofing, mold mitigation, just to name a few. Again, infrastructure is not flashy, but it is critically necessary in our school district. We have deferred maintenance for years on our buildings. The LL bond was supposed to be used for infrastructure, as I understand. Yes, at this site sewer and roofing was done, yet problems continued requiring additional work and funds. Yet, at this site, approximately twelve million dollars was spent on a new frontage and a historical walk. As a history teacher, I'm thrilled they have a historical walk. But twelve million dollars for a frontage and a historical walk when we have other sites that needed some money. A question of spending. These are expensive optics that should have been postponed in favor of funds used for other site improvements. Optical enhancements are wonderful if the funds exist. But not at the cost of structural needs that so many of our school sites have. So once again, I cannot support an exploration of this bond. Not until we have a change in leadership in Vista Unified. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, I would like to second what my colleague said. Trustee Martin, I agree with her um, on a lot of this. Uh, so we heard from our communities, our stakeholders. Before the closed session, we heard from teachers saying that they would not support the bond without a leadership change. Um, I've talked to community members, I've talked to parents who reiterated the same thing. I would love a bond. I would so love to support a bond, but. I just don't see it passing. If we don't have a leadership change and change is hard. Change is hard. We campaign on, many of us campaign on change and that takes courage to make the changes. And you know, it's, it's, and it's time for some new blood. I just gave you some student outcomes that we, we've had. It's time for some new lives. We need some, we need something new. And this isn't a criticism or anything on Dr. Doyle. It's just time for. Change. And so I do agree with trustee Martin. Um, I would be reluctant to support a bond going forward. So um, that's what I have to say.
First, Morocco, do. Will you allow me a chance to re-say something?
Sure.
Since you've been talking about me the whole time. Bond funds and the determination of spending bond funds is a board. Decision, not a superintendent decision. We have. We have tapes of every single board meeting. If someone wants to go back and review those tapes. Decision to focus attention at Vista High School was a bond, a board decision. Based on many conversations about where they would like to put their funding. Cheer on focusing funding on Vista Magnet Middle was more than just a facade. It actually was an infrastructure sewer project. If you, if you kind of look into the purpose of it, just wanna make sure everyone's clear. The superintendent, whether it was me or anyone else, is not the person who makes a decision about where the funding goes.
I just wanna add that um. The, the prior boards voted unanimously to. To uh. Work on Vista Magnet Middle School for the sewer project and also ADA. That school was so old that it was not ADA compliant for our students or community members. And so with California um. Construction, education, ed code law, if you upgrade the school, you have to make it ADA compliant. No ifs, no ands, no buts about that. And um. Yeah, every, every decision that the boards prior to this board made regarding the use of construction funds was unanimous. Five oh.
Thank you, add, but just one more thing. It's important to note for the record. That all of the oversight of our measure LL bond and measure O bond during my leadership. Was an A plus rating by the California Taxpayers Association and the CBO team.
In addition to that, we were able to pull together a full-range facility master plan. Uh, for members of the public, this allowed us to understand how much money we actually need. You know, back then it was a little. You know, back then it was a little over uh half a billion dollars. Our maintenance needs now are over a billion dollars. Most school districts, in fact, all school districts, the only way they are able to fix their infrastructure is through bonds. Uh, this board does not approve a bond. Ultimately, it goes to the voters. And so the contract before us. Is to use a consultant, get feedback. Is this something that is feasible? And then we can make the decision, put it on the ballot. But ultimately, it's the voters of this pursuit with that. I'd be happy to explore that opportunity and if voters at this point in time, the feedback from teachers, from uh parents, from students is not doing for the bond. Then you know, go with that, but at least we gotta do our due diligence, be proactive, engage the community and then make a decision.
So once again, I'll say twenty four percent. Okay, so the previous board voted twenty four percent to one site. Again, Dr. Doyle says that he works at the pleasure of the board. He does. But he is also the information that comes to the board. And so now, if this is coming to the board with a recommendation to approve. Most likely, they're going to follow that, but twenty four percent in any bright mind. And what about the rest of the school sites? And so I'm really questioning. Not only now Dr. Doyle's decisions or leadership, but also the previous school board, there are school, yeah, school board for twenty four percent. And as for the ADA, yes, of course, and I understand that. But I'm talking about a twelve million dollar frontage and I'm talking about a historical walk, not an ADA compliance.
Can I provide one more clarification?
No, it's my turn. I would notice talking about what I brought up, which is what we had a bunch of members of the public, a bunch of our, our, our stakeholders. Speak about not wanting the bond if there was not leadership change. Um, the last bond did not make it to the ballot because I had concerns about, because of these very same concerns. And I see us going down the same road. Right now, we need four votes to get it on the bond. There are two of us right now that are saying no. All, do we want to spend money in a time of budget crisis when it's not gonna go anywhere? So that's something to consider.
Go ahead, Dr. Doyle.
Dr. Doyle, you missed it now.
I I'm simply trying to clarify information that's put out. Um, the the point of the measure L L bond, just to be clear, we have twenty six schools in our school district. We actually used measure L funds for fourteen of those twenty six schools, various projects for those schools. Just wanna make sure we're clear, it wasn't a few schools.
In addition to that, the board did not decide to move with twenty four percent into one school site. As a matter of fact. Uh, we had the first wave of tariffs in twenty seventeen, which drove up construction costs. Uh, can you give us some estimates of what those construction costs were like?
Oh, great. Construction costs were raising on an annual basis by more than eight to ten percent. So it was, I mean, you would have to add it over a number of years, but we're talking twenty four plus percent increase as a result of that.
In addition to that, we had a list of projects that we wanted to do that were produced uh by the previous superintendent. Those numbers were not accurate. We never had uh experts analyze the school sites. Look at the infrastructure and get real numbers. And so, yes, we had a wish list. But the numbers we had in front of us weren't the accurate numbers. Now we have accurate numbers. And just two months ago, we approved to have an architect to go get the uh the infrastructure information from all of our school sites that are. In need of projects and we're gonna have even more accurate numbers. But when you know, last, last time when the bond uh was put before us. Um, the state put a bond for it. And in order to get state funds, we need matching funds. We were robbed of funds that Vista Unified could be using now to fix our infrastructure. And so if you wanna skip an opportunity, you know, that that'll be the soonest word, but once again, Lexus brought this opportunity. Uh, and with the, you know, uh, approve this contract.
I have something else to say, but I wanted to hear from trustee Markov if you, before I I say something else. If if you so uh please.
No, I I first of all, I would like to say I do appreciate trustee Martin's uh. Wanting to really take a look at the financials and look at and take responsibility for what the board is spending the money on. Uh, which includes computers and conclude and can, yeah, includes sites, school sites. And if we are indeed entrusted with a bond from the public. You know, that money as well, because it's, it is a fiduciary responsibility that is laid at uh at us. And so. Um, you know, so I I I appreciate all of the points that she brought up and I I do, you know. Understand that, you know, now that we, you know, I'm I'm, you know, both of us are new uh up here. Uh, and it's I, we benefit from having a long range facility master plan now and actually the public does. Okay, so this is some, the document that's online that anybody in the public can go and look at. You can look at like your, where does your kid go to school? Look at the buildings. What is the wish list at this site? What what kind of infrastructure needs are there? And if you go through and I, you add all of the sites up and all the money that you. That uh we need to make all the different repairs, it's pretty, a pretty large number. Um, and so even when we're sitting here talking about a bond. And you're gonna have something maybe on the order if it passes or actually you're gonna have an infusion of. You know, say, let's say, just throw a number out there of two hundred and fifty million, maybe three, okay? And you have a. A billion dollars worth for repairs, you're not gonna get, you're not, it's not gonna go everywhere. I mean, you're gonna have to pick and choose and the board is gonna have to do that. We're gonna have to talk about it. We're gonna look at the long range master, uh facility master plan. Okay, we'll have public input. This is the, this is the sort of thing that the board has to do as a board. Uh, and it's not, I think it's not just him. That's, this is us, this is our responsibility. So I am in favor of. At least exploring the feasibility of it. I mean, heck, it's a bad economy out there. Maybe the voters aren't gonna want this. It's, you know, like, that's what we do. This is why we explore this option and we get the feedback and we make a decision later on. That's where I stand.
Okay, uh before, before I take anymore, I wanna excuse our student board members. I wanna thank you so much for your participation. You've been awesome. Thank you so much. I look forward to you, you guys coming back next month and hearing your input. And and you can stay. You're more than welcome to stay. Okay, you don't have to leave, so.
We have homework to do, we understand.
Thank you. Carry on.
So what no one on this board has talked about tonight, at least. Is our students having to go to school um in facilities that have. Portables that are meant to have a life of twenty five or thirty years, where the roofs leak when it's raining. Where the underlayment gets all moldy and it has to be replaced and the floors get mushy. What that does to our students to have facilities that are not twenty first century facilities. Um, we have so many needs across the district. I've gotten emails from parents at Montevista that are um. Advocating for ADA facility upgrades because the school is is needing it. It's one of our oldest facilities, same thing at Vapa with plumbing issues, with sewer issues. Our kids deserve to have a school where they can use a bathroom without it getting uh. Clogged up or not working and working in facilities that won't cause them breathing problems because these portables are old. The time is now. By not voting for um to to for the bond, to put it on the ballot last time, it costs this district so much money with. Escalation and materials and then labor and it's just gonna get worse. So every time um. There's a delay, it it's very financially um detrimental to this district. And and that's why I'll be voting to support the um. The approval with our, this contract to make sure to find out what the electorate is feeling. And also to do right by the students of Vista Unified. They deserve to be in facilities that are twenty first century. And I'm an educator at work in a portable. It's been four years old. It's so old, it's so nasty. Who wants to be in there? Nobody. The kids don't, the teachers don't. It's unsapp.
I completely agree that our students deserve it. I absolutely agree. And we should have spread the money around. That would have been a better use of some of the funding. But I do agree. Also, I spent my entire career in a portable, my entire career. And I understand and it's moldy and terrible. Yes, we need new facilities. Yes, we do need a bond. But we also need that bond to either have stringent oversight by this board. And new leadership.
Yes, and and if you, I agree with you. We need that bond and our kids deserve better. So we need to do everything in within our power to get a bond passed and we heard from the public. They want new leadership or they will not support a bond. So. That's, that's the choice. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve item.
We already know the motion.
Oh, motion is second, okay. Um, any, uh I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in there say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, nay. So the motion carries three two. Moving on to item eight H.
Can you announce who said which vote?
Sure. Trustee uh Alvarado, trustees Alvarado, Vargas and Markov voted yes. Trustees Martin and Morocco voted no. Okay, item eight H, approved True North Research Contract. Uh, is there a vote? Okay, so a promotion by trustee Vargas, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Alvarado. Anybody care to speak on it?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Go ahead.
Once again, let me be clear. I have a fiduciary fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers and homeowners of Vista Unified. As a homeowner, that includes me. So let me be clear and transparent again. I will not and I cannot support a bond exploration. And if Dr. Doyle remains a superintendent, we need new leadership. We need a change. Let me give you another example to support my decision. This one involves a clear lack of transparency regarding an L L bond project. Truth and transparency are essential to have trust between the voters in Vista Unified. In twenty twenty one, a Title Nine lawsuit was settled between the R B V softball players and Vista Unified. The lawsuit was based on inequity of softball facilities with the boys' baseball facilities. The softball players won the lawsuit. The district was required to provide equitable facilities, playing fields, snack bar and dugouts. On a side note. R B V did get those facilities. That school site, they got twenty four percent. They got a boys' and girls' sports complex for six point five million. The R B V facilities, the R B V softball facilities cost approximately two point five million. It was paid for with L L funds. Let me be crystal clear on this. The lawsuit was filed in twenty eighteen, prior to L L. And it was paid for with L L bond money. The cost to the district for this settlement was rolled into the L L bond. At an early L L bond forum, I asked Dr. Doyle personally. Why the facilities were not paid out of the district's general fund. His response to me, and I quote this, I wrote it down, it all comes from the same pot. No, it does not. That two point five million bond funds were not available to be used on other projects. It was used on softball. Legal? I have no doubt. I have no doubt that it was legal. Dr. Doyle would not put himself in legal jeopardy. I firmly believe that and I am not in any way saying that he did. But my concern is that it wasn't transparent. Because that softball facility was and still is touted as a win for R B V. As an L L project. And it was not. It was a lawsuit. On a personal note, I'm a voter. I've always voted. And every school bond that has ever come to me, whether I lived here or in other cities, I voted for and supported. And against, against my concerns, I voted for the L L bond. I'm not against school bonds. I'm against taxpayer money not being used in its best possible way. And that's why I oppose this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I have.
Do I have a response?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Dr. Doyle.
So again, I want to restate, every bond conversation and decision as it relates to measure L L. Was a deliberative process taken by the school board members, not the superintendent, whether it was me or any other superintendent. The decision to allocate funding for whatever site was determined by the board at the time was a deliberative process that is. That is, um, that it, that we have recorded on tape, if someone chooses to watch it. To see what the process and the, and the decisions were. This was not a decision made by the superintendent. I'm so sorry that. That 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 seems as though you're, you're, you're going after a superintendent when in fact, this is a board member decision. And we have tapes that people can watch to see that. Decisions were made about how they would choose to allocate measure L L funds. That is correct. And during the deliberative process, it was a conversation with the board members about where they should best um place their money. So I just wanna be clear about this. This is not a superintendent decision. This is a board member deliberative process.
Thank you very much. Did you recommend to the board that they spend two point five million dollars for the softball field?
I did. I made no recommendation. The board, the, the, the district staff at the time brought forward the challenge that we had, we were faced as it released the Title Nine. During that conversation, the board made, again, deliberatively, had to, had the discussion amongst the board members about how they should address that. And the measure L L bond funding was brought up as a possible solution. I made no recommendations.
Brought up by the board members or brought up by a staff member?
We had to bring up the Title Nine. That's our responsibility to bring it to the board. It was a legal requirement.
I do understand that, but when I said brought up by the board or brought up by a district employee. Who brought up the idea of paying for it out of L L funds as opposed to the general fund?
That was again, a deliberative process that went back and forth with the board and staff about how they would address the Title Nine challenge. All of this is recorded.
The superintendent works at the pleasure of the board. The board needs to do its oversight.
Thank you. Um, I agree with trustee Martin on a lot of what she said. But I have another reason why I am definitely opposed to this one. Um, besides what I reiterated before about the bond not going forward. This company was, was the one that we used, um, what was it, two years ago, when we were looking at uh going forward with another bond? And was a large reason why I did vote no on that bond. And that was because this company came back with research. And I had asked to see the raw data and it was declined. I was told that there were privacy concerns as to why I could not see raw data. I have thirty four years in market, marketing and market research, doing surveys, not to the similar from this. It is a huge red flag when, number one, the client is not allowed to see the raw data. And number two, it is cited as privacy concerns. That means that the company is not anonymizing the data that they are getting back. That means that they can pick and choose who they send it to and who they choose to, to the recipients are. So I had seriousness givings about the data that was coming back, saying that the bond was viable. So I really am against this, this company on that level too. I would like to reiterate. We heard from the public, the public is not going to go forward with a bond if we keep the same leadership. Um, the perceptions that this, this, this back and forth between Dr. Doyle and uh trustee Martin. Um, uh probably shows the lack of confidence that the public has in this district for a bond. So uh I think a change in leadership is, is something that would, would show it's a new board. So that could probably go some, some. Uh, what further to um gain trust, but we need to complete the picture with new leadership. But again, the main reason why I'm voting against this is because of the company itself.
Dr. Doyle, in addition to the board, we have an independent citizens oversight committee, is that correct?
Yeah, citizens bonds, C B O says, citizen bond oversight committee.
How many findings do they have that we misuse funds, misuse funds?
Zero.
Have we ever been taken to the district attorney's office or the attorney general at the state for misusing measure L L funds?
No.
In twenty seventeen, this is the same company that we used for measure L L.
Correct.
Did we pass a bond in twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Great. So the data that they captured in twenty seventeen that moved the board at the time to move forward with the bond. Said that the bond, the bond would have passed and it did.
Correct.
And so, and I'm, am I missing something here? Like, this is the same company that advised us last time, that advised us in twenty twenty three. The twenty twenty three polling also showed us that, that if we were to put a bond forward, that also would have passed. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
About what percentage points were, were we getting a result back on the passing rate?
The final poll was sixty five percent.
Thank you.
No, that, that wasn't, there was, there was one that was within the margin of error too. Again, I reiterate, it is a red flag on a company that will not allow us to see the raw data. That is a huge red flag. The state, I asked for a statement methodology. It took them six weeks to get me a statement of methodology. The, 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 this is just not, these are not. Standard practices that are standard. standard practices that are standard in this industry. That's, that's what I'm saying. So I, I would prefer that we would go with it. You know, well, I'm, I'm not, probably not gonna, depending on what, what happens with leadership, I could change my mind, but, um, um, I'm, you know, not going forward with the bond, but particularly this kind of company, I, I would like to caution my colleagues about this company. Okay, and, hi trustee Markov?
Yeah, I would just like to read from the bottom of page three here. Uh, the last bullet point says, prepare a thorough report on the findings, including a detailed question-by-question analysis, description of the methodology, which is I think what you were asking for. Uh, so they'll have it, an executive summary of key findings and conclusions, recommendations, as well as comprehensive set of cross-tabulation showing how the answers vary by subgroups of voters. Um, specifically, I, I don't know, like, like, what, you know, what it means about raw data, but, um, they're at least telling you here that they're gonna give you the methodology.
Okay, so, um, I had to ask for the methodology last time. Number one. Number two, raw data is basically every single survey that gets sent, sent up, you get to see that because not every survey is usable. And sometimes you have, you have, uh, categories that are overutilized. So you have to massage the data in order to get a more accurate sample because you're sending out maybe, you know, five hundred surveys and you're coming back or you're polling five hundred people and then you're coming back with, you know, you have to narrow that down and, and how to clean things from. So you have to make sure that everything matches. Okay, so I wanted to see for myself with the raw data, what the, if the, if the, if they were matching the statement and methodology with the raw data. It's,
Basically check their.
Check their work, exactly. I have the, I have the know-how, know-how to do this. So I wanted to do that, just to double-check and they refused. And that's a red flag. That's a red flag. Same.
Dr. McGlarnie has more than twenty-five years of experience in survey methodology. He's a nationally recognized expert in survey research methodology. I, I don't know a lot about a lot of things and, um, and I know that it's good to rely on experts in the field to inform the board so we can make this, this, the best decision. Because again, the cost escalation for waiting is gonna cost the district and our students so much.
And yet you have an expert in the field right here as one of your colleagues that you refused to listen to last time.
I don't think you've done polling electorate. You've done marketing and research for Yonni Beesoon.
If, I've done, what do you mean, a vision? I've run for major corporations.
But not, not for.
I've done it for the United States Census, for the entire United States. So, I mean.
So I just, you know, there's a record, um, of success with this organization. And, uh, Timothy McGlarnie, so, um.
Then why wouldn't he, why wouldn't he let me look at the raw data? It's, it, it, you can, you can say what you want, but he refused to show me the raw data. I am trying to tell you that is a red flag. Okay, that's all I'm saying. His data may have been completely accurate, but it raises a question and a doubt, a huge doubt, when he refused to let me look at the raw data.
Dr. Doyle, this is approved. Can we get the raw data?
Well, I, I certainly can ask him for the raw data if that's what you're asking for. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, um, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Motion carries with a three-two vote. Trustees Alvarado, Vargas and Markov voting yes. Trustees Martin and Morocco voting no. Moving on, we do have a hold card for item eight I. Amanda Remen, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Amanda Remen. I am a parent here in the district. This is Gabby. She's come to help support me today. And we are here to talk on item AI and renewing contract. We, um, we saw today a room full of staff and parents and hired staff who've been working all day, who took out of their time to come here and show that and hear from them that they have concerns with renewing that contract, Dr. Doyle. We've just had a long talk about a bond that is severely needed in our district. That, there is no arguing that. Everybody seems to agree on that. It's definitely needed. In a time when inflation is high and people are scrapped for cash, but yet still know it's so vital and important, which is why it's so important to have the leadership that you trust and that you know moving forward. People are going to vote because they have that trust in that person. I still do believe we need a bond, but we need leadership in our district that is going to heal our district and have the strength from our teachers, our staff, our classified employees and our parents. Because our parents listen to our teachers, our students listen to our teachers, our staff, our everyone employed, and they're the ones that know working with our leadership day-to-day and affect. And they're coming out and telling you to rethink renewing this. And as a parent who is very involved at our schools, talking with parents, students, staff constantly, our parents are not going to support renewing that contract and wanting to move forward with a bond. I've heard it from community members. We lost a lot of faith with how things were handled with the closures of, um, Beaumont and Rancho Minerva and what it did to our families. And we now see the repercussions of busing kids from one side of our, our school district to another and other ones to the other side. I'm still getting constant text messages from families going, can you help guide me? Where do I need to find out information and where's the support on this? Because it, there is a lot to navigate and go through and this has been a rocky road. My main concern is, have you guys taken the time to hear from all stakeholders? Our, our teachers, our parents, our students, what, what, this is your one employee. Your one employee, but everything that happens in our district is a reflection of that leadership. And I just ask that when you are going to do things like renew a contract or even new hiring, that you take the time to hear from your stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I will. I will entertain a motion to approve item AI.
Someone, you gotta read this.
Okay, I do have to, I have to read out. The proposed amendment would extend the superintendent's term of employment for June 30th, 2027. There are no other changes to the agreement, including superintendent's compensation. Okay, um, all right, I will entertain a motion to approve item eight I.
Motion to approve eight I.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Motion carries three, two with trustees Alvarado, Vargas and Markov voting yes. Trustees Martin and Morocco voting no. Okay, and with that, um, we are moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that want to be pulled? Anybody want to pull an item? And Adam, so the consent calendar is a bunch of motions that we consolidate into one motion. Um, but any member, or any member of the board, um, can pull an item. And any member of the public can speak on any item which would automatically pull it. So that's what we're asking for now, is if anybody has any items to pull. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the entire consent calendar.
I move to approve the entire consent calendar.
Moved by trustee Alvarado. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Markov. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. And moving on to staff committee reports and board feedback. Uh, seventeen A, summer facilities project, 2025 summer.
Right. Mr. Kirby, are you ready to go?
Go, Kirby.
All right. Kevin's worked very hard and that's, I want to thank Kevin and this entire team for the great work they did this summer. When other folks are taking a much deserved break, this team actually goes into overdrive and there are many things that were a cause of result of the great work your team did over the summer. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Doyle. Yes, President Morocco, Vice President Martin, members of the board, student members of the board and, uh, Mr. Superintendent. Uh, the following presentation that we're gonna watch now or go through now is actually the highlight of some of the summer projects. And our very first slide is gonna kind of help explain what some of those projects were. This is, this exact listing was presented to the board in the spring of this year. And each of these projects, as you go down there, were ones that, well, we made it our goal, uh, the direction of the board, uh, to get completed. And some of them were kind of, kind of obvious as far as what the direction was with the size listed. Others might not be as obvious. For instance, if you see the grounds landscaping section there, uh, fuel reduction, I'm talking about automotive fuel. What we're talking about there is brush clearing, tree clearing for, uh, wildfire fuel, that type of thing. Uh, defense projects, for instance, those are to raise sections of fence along the street strategically, not full campus fence replacement at this time. So give you kind of an idea of the projects we're gonna go over. We'll see some of these examples, like our first one here. Uh, this was a playground and surfacing project, uh, that was done at, uh, you can see Holly Island Elementary, California Avenue and, uh, the Leadership Academy. And in the middle, you can kind of see the before photo of that, uh, compromised rubberized turf. And then of course, the two beautiful photos there from the different campuses of where that's been totally removed and replaced. And while it's aesthetically pleasing and it looks, looks nice, it also helps bring those playgrounds back into a safe status for the students. In addition to full replacements at a couple campuses, we also did some patches and repairs to extend the life of other areas. Uh, these two slides on the left, you have our, this would have been one of the athletic field projects. And actually, what had happened is the mo curve there had degraded over time and created trip hazard, sharp edges that would have been dangerous to the students. And we were able to go in with contractors and replace sections of the mo curve and restore that, that to a safe status. And, and the, uh, project on the right there, well, that's that fuel reduction that we're talking about. And that was actually a very large project along the perimeters of Lake and Madison Elementary, where the acacia had grown into the neighbors' fences. We had, uh, tree safety concerns there. So we did a major removal. And if you look on the, the far right, that's actually one of the brown hitches that's meant to collect stormwater. Well, it had been overgrown, um, and, and so we're able to bring that back in the safe standards, reduce the risk of fire hazard, as well as make it more maintainable for maintenance staff to take care of in future. Uh, this slide actually is a nice presentation of some of the more facility building related items that we worked on over the summer. On the left, if you notice the white roof in the aerial photo, uh, that's the replacement of the Vapa five hundred wing. That was quite a uh, a detailed project there. As they had to raid those AC units, they had to modify the electrical for the new pitch. So they could do a full replacement on that roof there as well as the coating. So not only do we now have a waterproof roof, we actually enhance the, uh, energy efficiency of that building. Uh, kind of going to the right side of that slide, we have our asphalt concrete project. There's actually two different contracts that we issued this summer. Uh, oh, as it says there, over five hundred and fourteen thousand square feet of, uh, preventative maintenance. It's filling cracks in the parking lots, playgrounds, still coating it to extend the life of that asphalt, but also repairs of areas that have been compromised or were no longer safe. Uh, going on to our next slide, because we didn't capture all the projects there. And this is the projects that are still in progress for various reasons. Uh, so to kind of go down the list and then explain why some of these are still either in the works or farther down the road. Uh, the midterm projects, those are ones that we're still working on. We hope to, uh, have contracts awarded, uh, in the very near future. For instance, at Rancho Windham Vista High School, we twice, twice tried to bid out, uh, the seven hundred wing relocatable siding project that we planned to replace siding out there that was damaged. And both times it came back, uh, over our presented budget to the board. And so the primary reason for that was because of the work conditions at the time. We, it was bid too close to summer, we think. Uh, the idea is that if we are, we can bid in the coming months, we'll be able to do it over spring break, perhaps, uh, next, early next summer at the latest. Uh, there's a couple other projects there. You can see the site around prepares a link very similar to the, uh, RBV project there. And then a flooring project that's being funded by CNS is both at North Avenue, uh, Vista Academy of Performing Arts Kitchen, Vista Maggot Middle School Kitchen, to bring those up to health code standards. And then the longer-term projects, sorry, Dr. Doyle, the longer-term projects there, those are those finishing projects that we talked about there at the beginning. Uh, Remi's actually, our architects finished the design and it's ready to go out for bid. It's a, I would say a similar project compared to Montevista Elementary School, where we'll be impacting fire lane gates and pedestrian gates. So that one will have to go to the state architect and see what changes we have to make there. So it's a little longer-term project. So.
Say, say a little bit about the switchgear, because that's.
Okay, very, yes. Yeah, that's one that, um, was been on our plans. It's been a long time to get it rolling because of the complexity of the switchgear. It feeds that entire campus. It is original to the campus. And so we're gonna be replacing that, kind of, the heart of the, the power supply to that site. And those contracts are already awarded. However, it's a long lead time item, long lead time item. Uh, looking at about nine to twelve months before, uh, that can arrive. So, and, and a good best case scenario, we may be doing that next summer if all works out. So that, the, all those previous slides are really about work that our contractors have done, our project coordinators have helped to put together. But the next set of slides really is to focus on our internal staff, the work that they perform over the summer, particularly our maintenance and grounds department. The first slide is some samples of what the maintenance, uh, department has done over the summer. They were carpenters or maintenance technicians or painters. Uh, they were busy supporting that move from Vita to its new location, adapting some of those classrooms to the specialized programs that they have there. Um, and so, and doing so, they're able to, it's kind of, that picture is able to salvage some of the shelving that was no longer needed and reuse it at other campuses. Uh, plumbing is a big one for the summertime. Typically through the school year, plumbers are, uh, triaging, uh, safety concerns, just trying to keep, uh, uh, plumbing working. Whereas in the summertime, we could take a little more preventative maintenance, uh, measures. For instance, you can see that they've gotten into the wall here a little more basically. They can shut down the water to the entire campus to replace isolation valves and other things that need preventative maintenance. As we go into the, our final example here, it's really what our grounds crew, uh, has done over the summer, or at least a sample, like say of it. Uh, on the left, you can see that, uh, we take that summertime, whenever there's less traffic on the campuses, a lot of times it's none, but to address high-traffic areas where uh, perhaps we can't get to through the school year, to address, uh, maintenance of trees, pruning of trees, uh, playground, uh, equipment repairs as far as a chain replacement, shackles, things like that. But it also gives us a great opportunity uh, to address our athletic fields. They get a little bit of a break. We can go in and aerate, fertilize, try to green those back up for the coming school year. But really a key component of what they do to help, help that area, uh, those athletic fields is the irrigation audit, as you see in that right column. And that's really a critical component of that, because as they come in and they check, uh, the spray patterns of our sprinklers, they check runoff rates on our landscapes. They can not only ensure that we're, uh, protecting our landscape that we already have, but also save district resources and water as well. So hopefully, uh, through those slides, you can see the pride that we, we take in our employees and all they've done. Uh, but now we'd like to open it up to you to see if you have questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Anybody have comments?
Uh, they have more clarification on the improvements made to the seven hundred wing in RBV. I hope they'll ask.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So that particular project, the several of the, uh, relocables in the seven hundred wing, uh, have siding that's, uh, degraded that needs to be replaced. And so we're gonna go through, uh, replace as much of it as we can within the budget. Uh, the budget, I think, was right around a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, what was said originally. Address the skirting around to prevent rodent intrusion, things like that.
Yeah, I would just like to comment that teachers at RBV have been commenting, or have been asking for a change to the seven hundred swing for a very, very long time. Those classrooms, a lot of them are old and they have a lot of problems. So I, I hope that some change can be made to that. Because honestly, it affects the teachers and then the teachers feel disgruntled to teach.
Thank you for that. And I appreciate that. And we're, we're, we're definitely trying to expedite that project.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a, it's a curious, curiosity question. Uh, what is a web-based irrigation audit?
Uh, so in addition to an actual manual where they go up to the site and they check runtimes, they check, like I said, runoff. We actually have web-based irrigation system that, uh, they can go through and set times, time of day, evenings, trying to keep it off of the school schedules. But at times that program can, can get adjusted knowingly or perhaps not get corrected. So you end up with dry spots, overwatering in some areas depending on the season that you're in. So they go through and check the seasons, the, the current water rates. You also have different valves that you want to water at different times. And so making sure that they're not coming on at the same time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, uh, to item seventeen B, information and discussion on measure LL, general obligation, bond sales and potential refinancing oppositions. Or the proposition L. So Adam, this is again, we're talking about some bonds that already passed measure LL. You've heard about. Uh, met, uh, bond, proposition O was another bond that we just paid off. But then.
All, all of us, student can talk about that.
I, I don't put aside on my tax bill. I just got my tax bill. I don't look aside.
Yeah. Well, uh, good evening, President Morocco, members of the board, Dr. Doyle. Thank you again for inviting me here this evening to chair some. Thank you again for inviting me here this evening to share some information with you. Um, this is a reminder, my name is Jim Kim, I'm here on behalf of Bank of America, and we, we're a financial services partner to the district. And tonight, we have a couple of objectives we'd like to, uh, guest cover today. So one of those objectives is cover some information about Measure L L, as well as a refinancing opportunity that it might be before us related to some of the old propositions, O bonds. And after we share that information, we'd like to get direction from the board as to how it wishes to proceed. And direction would be given to Dr. Doyle and staff. And they will then go ahead and formulate a plan, sort of the next steps to effectuate the wishes of the board. So to that end, we have a, a number of slides to share with you, starting with what I like to call the credit rating slide. It's a, it's the, um, the slide right after this one. And if you remember at the last board meeting, we shared some information about a bridge financing or certificates of participation. That's the left side of the slide in the gray box. This evening, on matters related to the general obligation bonds, is the right side of the slide. And one of the things that we would like to just remind the board is, we do have a very high credit rating. A plus is a high credit rating. And just for a context, there are two categories of credit rating when an investor is evaluating whether or not to invest in our community. And those categories are investment grade and non-investment grade. And an A plus credit rating firmly places us within the investment grade category. Now, you might be asking yourself, well, what are some of the driving factors behind this strong credit rating? Well, there are a number of factors, but some of the factors are, are high property values. I will share with you later on that our property values have steadily increased at a healthy rate, recovering from the great recession that occurred over a decade ago. In addition to that, coupled with that, there are a couple of things that also drive our credit rating. And that is a complement to the board and to staff, is the prudent fiscal management of the district's operations, making some difficult decisions to make sure that our budgets are sound. And then secondly, it's the district's proactive approach to budgetary adjustments in times of need. So those are some of the driving factors be, behind our credit rating. Now, let's now talk about Measure L L. So on the next slide, this is what I like to call the facts slide. What are some other pertinent facts related to our Measure L L bonds? There are many facts here, but I would, I would like to point your attention to the top line, that five point two four percent. That's the rate of our property value growth this fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six, from the prior fiscal year. Just as a reminder, when Measure L L was planned, the planning tool we had used was a four percent growth rate. So our actual results have outperformed what we have used for our budgeting purposes. Now, I'd like to draw your attention to the last three rows of this table. There are three tax rates on here, starting with the bottom one. That sixty-dollar tax rate is the legal maximum tax rate for a bond plan for a school district like ours. Above that, that thirty-five dollars and seventeen cents, that was a internally targeted tax rate board and staff decided for Measure L L bonds. Now that, a line above that, the twenty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents, that's the actual tax rate the community is currently paying on Measure L L bonds. But I thought I'd share these figures with you before we move on to the next slide. But one, one more comment on that yellow font, that fifty-two million dollars, that's the remaining authorization under Measure L L. And that's one of the topics that I'd like to talk to you about and seek, ask for your direction on how to proceed going forward. So on the next page, you might be wondering, you know, let's, what activities have we taken under Measure L L? So starting with that second column from the left, that's what I like to call the baseline plan. At the inception of Measure L L, we had budgeted that we would take five bond draws over a thirteen-year period spaced out every three years in equal amounts of about forty-nine million dollars. Now, after the passage of Measure L L, when it came ta, time to take our first bond draw in two thousand and nineteen, due to construction cost escalation and the rising needs for more facilities dollars, we decided to accelerate some of our bond draw amount. And so instead of forty-nine million dollars, we issued fifty-six million dollars and change as our first bond draw. And then those subsequent amounts be, below that fifty-six million dollars was what we had planned to issue in the future years. Now, in two thousand and twenty-two, when it came time to issue the second bond series or the second bond draw, once again, we were faced with construction cost escalations and more facilities needs. So we had to accelerate more of the bond, Measure L L bond proceeds. So instead of the thirty million dollars that was planned back in two thousand and nineteen, we accelerated that amount and increased it to a hundred and thirty-eight, let's call it a hundred and forty million dollars. You know, one interesting factoid about that second draw in twenty-two is, in addition to this hundred and forty million dollars of general obligation bonds, we coupled that with a, a bridge financing, our first bridge financing, a C O P issuance in the amount of about thirty-eight million dollars or so. So the total aggregate amount that was available to the district was this hundred and thirty-eight, plus another thirty-eight from the bridge financing. Now, after that one hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, we have a lot to be determined. And this is where we like to ask you and seek your direction on how to proceed from this point and onward. So on the next slide are some potential paths that the district may take. These are just bookends, um, starting with the left one with the baseline draw amount. That thirteen point five million, that was what we had budgeted and estimated in two thousand and twenty-two after the issuance of Series B bonds. If we issued thirteen point five million dollars today, there would remain about thirty-eight, thirty-nine million dollars of remaining authorization for the district to draw in the future years. Now, this allows us to stay to that thirty-five dollars and seventeen cents internally targeted tax rate. Again, you can go as high as sixty dollars. On the right side, the other end of that bookend, assuming that we can issue all of the remaining bonds, so fifty-two million dollars, it's fifty-two point two million dollars of bonds. We would then have to adjust or rebench our internally targeted tax rate to about forty-two dollars and fifty cents. And that's the other decision where we would be asking the board direction on, whether or not we want to revenge to that forty-two dollars and fifty cents. Again, the maximum tax rate that we can take the tax rate up to is sixty dollars for Measure L L. So these are some of the potential paths that the district board could take. There are a number of different paths in between, but I thought I would just share the bookends just for your benefit and for illustrative purposes. Now, should the board just provide direction to staff to proceed and formulate the next steps? You might be wondering, well, what are some of the next steps? That's on the next slide here. And these are just some of the major milestones in a bond issuance or bond draw phase. But I would categorize them or group them into three parts. The first part is the preparation of legal documents and seeking a formal approval by the board to proceed with the bond issuance. After that, the second phase is to obtain a credit rating. And the district's staff members, as well as the district's team members will work together in representing the district in front of a nationally recognized credit rating agency to obtain that. And then the final phase is the marketing of the bonds and attracting investors. And when we market the bonds, we would sell these bonds to investors all across the country, from east coast all, all the way to west coast. And we would lock in the interest rates, the proceeds of the bonds will be deposited at the county for the district's use. Now, before we conclude the topic about information about this, uh, bonds, I'd like to also spend a couple of minutes about Proposition O. So.
Okay, I wanted to, uh, give you a time warning, we're, we're, uh.
Of course.
About at ti, ten minutes, uh, do you, how much more time do you have?
Three minutes.
Perfect. Okay, take your time.
Sure. So the next slide is about Proposition O. I would like to just inform the board that there is an opportunity for us to consider refinancing some old bonds to deliver savings to the new bonds. And one of the things that I would like to mention is all of the savings are passed back to the taxpayers and none of it is kept at the board level or at the district level. And we will not extend the term of the bonds, because I know sometimes when we refinance our old mortgages, we enter into a new thirty-year mortgage. It's not like that for the bonds. We try to squeeze out all the savings within the same existing term as you. Now, yeah, oh, yeah, it's, it's on the next slide. Now, one of the other considerations we might take into, uh, uh, into consideration is that we could consider this refinancing as an independent sale. However, due to the size of this refinancing package, it may not pass allow. So the reason why we're bringing this information before you now is, should the district proceed with the next bond draw, we could bundle this potential refinancing together to realize economies of savings in terms of costs. And the savings estimated there, that's net of all costs. So, um, that's all the slides that I have. The next slide is just the summary of the available fund dollars, uh, available funds for the district in terms of its ability to address the facilities needs this fiscal year. It could range anywhere from thirty-five million to seventy-seven million. So with that, um, I'll open it up to any questions and.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Kim. Does anyone have any questions?
No, no, I have a comment.
Trust you, Martin?
Um, you mentioned O and L L, and rolling them together, did I mishear that?
Oh, so the refinancing of Proposition O and issuance of Measure L L can be bundled together. So instead of two separate transactions, you bundle them as one transaction. So you econom, you economize on paying the consultants like myself. You don't pay for us once instead of two separate times.
And the total amount, um, of all the draws that are left would be these red numbers that were up here?
That's correct.
Right here.
Fifty, fifty-two million dollars is left in Measure L L.
And you need, you need a decision from us? This isn't an action item, but, um, you need feedback, you know, direction to staff.
Excellent. That's right.
Okay, okay. So does anyone have any?
I think, I, I would be in support of it, because whatever, um, relief we can bring to the taxpayers or savings is a win for the entire community. Even if it doesn't come back to our, you know, general fund to, or any bond fund to fix facilities.
I agree, and hence my property tax bill that I just got, that had six hundred plus dollars in school bond taxes. So, so yes, I agree. Anyone else? Do you need anything beyond the, the bundling? Do you need, do you, do we need to decide which, like, which option we want in terms of?
So, so the direction for tonight is this page here, which is if, if you're comfortable with next steps, we will move forward with the process. And Jen will bring forward, uh, additional options and things you're not voting on. You're simply saying, are you comfortable with us moving forward with the initial couple of steps you see on this page?
What page?
It's.
It's, uh.
Page nine.
Page nine, step one, two, and three. Is that correct, Jen?
That's correct, Dr. Doyle.
Okay. Um, uh, who's, is, does anyone have any hesitations about this? Okay, so thumbs up consensus. You're not real comfortable?
I just, I just don't feel like I have my head wrapped around.
It's, it's confusing to me too, because it seems like we're not really going to get any extra money out of this, right? This is just about how we pay back the taxpayers.
So the first component related to Measure L L, if the district decides to move forward and issue the remaining authorization of fifty-two million, that money will be deposited for the benefit of the district to use for facilities. And that money will be held in trust at the county.
Is that money already, uh, this is a Dr. Doyle question, is that money already co, committed or is that money that we've been, okay?
The, the district would have to make a decision on where we go with it. Um, but we couldn't do any more construction if you didn't move forward on this. And there's this significant time lapse. In order to have the money available, there are many months involved. You may want to walk them through the timeline.
Sure, that's.
That's why we're talking with you now.
Sure. So these milestones from start to finish takes about ninety days. So just if you decide, if you decide that you need the proceeds by, let's say, June, so that you can work on these projects during the summer months, you really need to start the process by late February at the latest.
The last time we were talking with the board about some challenging projects that you would like to address. In order for us to address those in late spring, early summer, we would need to have this conversation now with Jen, so that we do our necessary homework to bring back to the board to actually vote on an appropriate next process.
Okay. All right. Did that help you, Trustee Martin?
So, uh, the L L money would be for the district's use.
That's.
The O money would be returned to the tax.
That's right.
Now I'm there. Thank you.
Yeah, Neil, uh, it's a really good question. The reason we owe money would be returned is because we've already spent the old money. This is just paying for it now.
That's right. We're just decreasing the repayment.
Okay.
I'm there. Okay.
You're good?
Any, anybody else?
Are, are we trying to decide between, uh, the current draw and the maximum draw amount now? Or is that, I mean, because in my opinion, I'd say take it all, just because of inflation, you know, just have it in the.
There are pros and cons with that. So many school districts are electing to accelerate their bond draws, precisely for the reason of construction cost escalation. Right. But should the district decide to direct the staff, I'm sorry, district board decides to direct, uh, excuse me, should the district board direct staff to proceed with drawing all of the money right now? One of the other things that the district is directing staff and my team to do is to rebench our targeted tax rate from that thirty-five dollars to the forty-two dollars and fifty cents. Again, your maximum is sixty dollars.
And, and just for historical perspective, because we have some new board members, that's why we went to the one hundred and thirty-eight draw. It was a very large draw for the purpose of getting ahead of cost escalation.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else? Is everybody comfortable with moving forward, giving staff direction to move forward, um, on this? Thumbs up, thumbs up. We have five thumbs up.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, oops, wait, I lost my agenda. We are moving on to item, oh, my favorite, seventeen C, V U S D academic, oh, the postman coming.
So your nickname is officially stuck.
Oh, I, I enjoy it thoroughly. It's true.
Good evening, good evening, members of the board, trustees, superintendent, Dr. Doyle. I'm Steve Post, Director of Measurement and Monitoring. Uh, before I dive into my academic achievement, I'd like to talk about our student board members. Uh, proud to say that three out of four of them are former Vista Magnet students, my students. From my tenure as principal at Vista Magnet Middle School. And Adon, I had to ask him about his three languages, English, Spanish, and Arabic. Yes, very, very cool. All right. So, uh, this evening, I'm here to tell you about our recent academic achievement updates, looking at our CASP scores with, uh, with just public as of last week. And our A P and I V scores, which are, uh, from our high schools from last year. Uh, this is, uh, looking at some multiple measures of success. I bring you different metrics as they are available, so we could have a balanced assessment system, looking at different ways to, uh, track the progress of our students. So let's dive into the CASP assessments. Um, as we've discussed before, the system is an annual spring assessment system for students to take their, uh, assessments in math and English. Uh, they take that in grades three through eight and eleven. And then science also in grades five, eight, and once in high school, um, in grades eleven or twelve. Students with an I E P have an alternate assessment in all those, uh, same subjects. And students in a D L I, uh, dual language program take the California Spanish assessment. Um, unfortunately, those results don't come out until December this year. There were some updates in the, um, scoring process, so we'll get those a little bit later. All right. So a quick reminder on the purpose of the CASP assessments. These are, uh, aligned to the California content standards, um, the, and they're looking at growth and improvement over time. It's about progress. So, um, instead of looking at anyone's snapshot, it's important to look at growth over time for students and for our district. I'll look at some trends in our district tonight. Um, and remember, this is one indicator of student growth and performance. And we want to look at the whole complete picture of our student to make sure that we look at other indicators, um, and cross-reference those. All right, here's a quick, uh, timeline of a, uh, summary of the reports that I brought to you so far this year. I did three preliminary reports earlier in the year, on July, August, and September, looking at the, uh, preliminary data. Uh, tonight, I get to share with you the official public data. Like I said, that came out last week, on Thursday last week, so it was very timely. And then I'll be able to present in December about the California school dashboard as well to look at those indicators. Okay, another quick reminder on the, um, achievement results, how do we look at these? So students earn a scale score in each test, which is an actual numerical score. And those get grouped into four achievement levels. Uh, the top levels, level four is standard exceeded, then standard met, then standard nearly met, and then standard not met. On the right side of this slide is the, um, snapshot of the current student score report, what our families got to explain their scores. And on the next slide, we're going to look at what the State Board of Education actually approved for the new achievement level descriptors and the new look at the student score report, which will come in two thousand and twenty-six. So, uh, for your information, I've given you some, you know, indicators that this is coming and this is absolutely approved. And the state is working on communications about this. But the achievement level descriptors, there's still four levels. They've been renamed, uh, level four is advanced, level three is proficient, level two is developing, and level one is minimal. These represent a continuum of. And level one is minimal. These represent a continuum of grade level performance, where levels four, three, and two. Are a range of grade level performance with different degrees of complexity. Only level one is actually uh not at grade level. So on the right side, there's a snapshot of that new preliminary student score report. Um, and the statement means Jenny demonstrated developing grade level knowledge and skills. So that would be the developing level. So that is how the new descriptions will state that the cut scores and the actual numerical values are the same. Those are not going to change. Okay, so here we are. This is an actual uh screen grab from the California Test Results website, showing the Vista Unified overall English Language Arts scores. So this shows a nice graph that is a visual to show right off the bat, forty-four percent of our students. Were at that standard met or standard exceeded level, levels three or four, those top levels. And you can see that the breakdown of the percentages for each level are shown there, and uh we have. Definitely room for growth. We know we want to have more students, but the good news is we are trending in that direction. We have some steady progress, and we will always say that we want more students to be at that level. Here's a look over the past few years, the past four years, at English Language Arts scores, and you can see that it's uh primarily similar. But we do see the growth as the top levels, the blue and the green levels, um standard exceeded, standard met. Are actually a bit larger, and that lower level, uh the orange level for standard not bet is a bit smaller. Overall, it's one point five percent more students this year are at the standard met, standard exceeded level compared to the previous year. Here's the breakdown of English Language Arts by grade. So the grade level, starting third grade, fourth grade, et cetera. And you can see that there's similar marks overall up until you get to eleventh grade. And we see that huge growth in eleventh grade, which we're very proud to see, and that's the goal is, you know, we have our students proficient. And ready for what's next after high school. We know that learning is accumulated. We know that students take time. Uh, for example, an English learner might not grow as quickly in their early years, and they might really gain stride in the later years. So we're happy to see that that accumulation of learning is happening, and our uh eleventh grade students are demonstrating much higher levels of proficiency. Here's a breakdown of some of our student groups. So this graph right here is just the growth, the amount of growth, meaning comparing last year to this year. Uh, for how much more, how many more students are proficient um in the standard met or standard exceeded level. So Vista Unified overall for English Language Arts, one point five percent. Um, but we can see that our students with disabilities. Socioeconomically disadvantaged students, English learners, and homeless students, four of our more vulnerable populations are also growing. And so that's the indicator that we are all moving up in the right direction. Now, do we want more? Yes, but we have at least moved that needle towards uh more proficiency, and we're not leaving student groups behind. Um, so that's English Language Arts, and math is next. This is another uh summary graph of mathematics, looking at just under thirty-four percent of our students at that standard met. Um, and standard exceeded level. And again, area of growth. That's a that's a trend um that we know we've had, and that's a statewide trend where math is a much larger area of growth. Uh, we can see that we have the last four years, um again, with the color-coded bar graph here, with the higher levels growing a bit. And the lower level decreasing. We want fewer students in that lower level. Uh, math grew by just under one percent, zero point nine percent more students. But we've seen that math has grown a bit each year, so we have that accumulation of growth over the past four years. Here's mathematics by grade level. Um, and you can see that we don't have that consistency, and we don't have that eleventh grade jump that we are hoping to see. So we definitely need to focus on mathematics. We definitely need to start right at the beginning with math in the elementary and accumulate and build that knowledge up. Uh, we need to, you know, look at our our instructional practices and our supports for our students in math. There's no doubt about that. Here's the student groups um for mathematics. Like I said, as a district as a whole, we grew by just under a percent. Um, and then again, we have nice consistency with our student groups growing as well, and these match uh what we're seeing statewide and in the county as well. Looking at all the scores, um uh everyone's growing by about a point or two, one or two percentage points in the county, in the state, and local districts. That's generally what we're seeing, and so we're matching that trend. We're moving in that right direction, just like other districts. All right, science, our third subject area is science, and you can see that about thirty percent of our students were at that met or exceeded level. Uh, those uh two top two levels. Science is different in that uh the standard met, I'm sorry, the standard nearly met level, level two. Is much larger, and that's been the trend for years. Uh, science is only tested in grades five and eight and once in high school. So it's a little bit trickier, I would say, for all the students to really get to those much higher sophisticated levels at three and four. Um, here's science over the past few years, and again, that trend holds where you have a lot of students in that standard nearly met. Uh, but we have had increases in recent years in the top two categories, which is encouraging. Here is science by grade, so fifth grade, eighth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade. And you can see that there's um a little bit higher in the high schools, um where you have uh more students in those upper. Um, categories and and fewer students, actually significantly fewer students in the uh not met category, which is encouraging. Here's the student groups, and uh this is again Vista Unified as a whole, and science grew by about one point six percentage points. Uh, students with disabilities have a lot of growth there. Uh, unfortunately, socioeconomically disadvantaged students, not nearly as much. Um, but we can see that the general trend is our students in our more vulnerable subgroups. Are still tr- uh growing along with the general population uh for the whole district. All right, here's a nice wrap-up of the growth um showing the last three years. Um, and this is a similar graph. You might remember this from my preliminary reports. Um, it's nearly identical to the preliminary numbers I gave you. Might be off by a tenth of a percent, just um, you know, confirming that with the state. And so again, English Language Arts, this is the accumulation of um the combination, I'm sorry, of standard met and standard exceeded. Um, we grew by about a point and a half in English Language Arts, uh zero point nine percentage points in math, and one point six percentage points in science from year to year. So with this, our administrators have already identified their growth areas and their strengths. They've already worked with their staff. They've already begun to dive into this with our PLCs and our staff meetings. Uh, we're going to continue our focus on pedagogy. For example, our math transformations and our core reading at the elementary levels are focus areas. We want to really hone in on math, absolutely. We're going to continue our PBSA, which is the Plan Do Study Act cycles, to really look at improvement science, to study specific. Uh, focal areas and make sure that what we're doing is having an impact on our students. And as I've indicated in my previous reports, looking at the cohort growth analysis, looking at how our students are growing over time. Comparing the same students over time to make sure that we see that they are making progress. And then just on the bottom, uh real quick, for my next report in December, preview of what we will look at. And I will point out that there's a new indicator this year on the dashboard, and it's a student growth indicator, which is aligned to the cohort growth. Uh, information that we've shared previously. Okay, so that's the CASP assessments, and I'm going to jump into AP and IB exams. These are the assessments that our high school students take. They can opt in to take these very challenging courses. They can take advanced placement or international baccalaureate courses, and they can take this college level work. Uh, while they're still in high school, and they can take the tests and pass those tests with those specific scores of three or higher on the AP. And a four or higher on the IB exams, and they can get that college credit. They can be eligible to earn college credit, which is a huge benefit for them. It reduces the time and cost of earning their college degree, um and even allows them to get into advanced college coursework um when they're ready. So here's a real clear trend of our international baccalaureate tests and passing uh scores over time. Past four years, we've had a very significant increase in students engaging in IP, I'm sorry, uh not not AP, IB exams. Over time and passing with that grade of four or higher. So not only are students taking the challenge, but they're rising to the occasion, improving their standards of mastery. AP, same trend, but if you notice that these numbers are in the thousands, these are many, many students taking these exams, passing these exams. And the trend is very clear. Our teachers and our our principals and administrators are really focused on expanding this access. Supporting our students and making sure that they're ready to get this um really big benefit for them for their post-secondary education. And here's one that I really enjoy is looking at the percentage of our graduates. Who earned a three or higher on their AP exams at any point during high school. Almost one out of three last year, thirty-two point four percent, almost a third. One out of every three high school students is walking out with college credit already in their pockets. That's a big accomplishment to help them set up for success, and that has grown significantly, uh thanks to the hard work of our students, thanks to the hard work of our teachers. All right, that is my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Okay, anybody have any questions?
Comment on our question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, on on the AP, do we have the data for those from like ten years ago?
Yeah, so I could dive into that. I could go back into the AP and uh pull up what was, I think, in pre-pandemic levels. Is that what you're curious about?
Yeah, and then in addition to that, uh do we still pay for the exam? I know there's.
Yeah, so we definitely help with the fee waivers and the fee reduction, and there's many students who um are taking advantage of that.
Yeah, that'd be great, and if we could cor- uh put it side by side for the number of students that complete it to you, that will too go to college. Uh, I've been, I think this is one data point that, you know, there's a lot of success stories. I know uh the counselor at Vista High School, Victor. Um, we emailed us, I believe, two weeks ago, you know. Twenty-four, twenty-four percent of our seniors at Vista High School have applied to college, which is tremendous. And so. For those of you that know, you know, that is a great opportunity and with, you know, trying to open those doors and, you know, um tackle this uh. The uh challenges of higher education with the, you know, um I think it's small things that, you know, this board has done to, you know, open up the doors of opportunity.
Yeah.
Thank you for all that data.
Absolutely.
Trust you, Alvin?
With regard um to the AB, AP uh exams. Did the trio, the federal program trio, did they help subsidize some of the costs for our students for that um for those exams?
I'm not familiar with that one, Dr. Doyle.
You know about Trio because the federal um. Program that's been cut.
Yeah, so we I we did not use Trio money in our blueprint, but we subsidized it with our own internal funding. I can check on Trio. But I do not recognize that from internal.
Right, I know we have subsidized that. That was a commitment that prior boards made, but.
We can check.
Wondering if that's going to affect how many uh students are able to take AP exams, because they would pay for some of those exams.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're talking about in the future.
Yes, in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a question. Um, the IB and AP, the same students, a student can be enrolled in both, correct?
They can. Um, so so AP, advanced placement courses are are more common. Uh, we have IB at our uh at Metro Bina Vista High School and at Vista High School. And there's certain coursework that they can engage in, and they could even be a full IB diploma student, which means they're taking a large amount of IB coursework. So they are a bit like pathways in that you can select one or the other, or you could do both. Um, and so it's it's an opt-in for a student to say, yes, I'm up for these challenges, and of course, we're going to encourage them to do so, so um you're not um exclusive.
So I'm, what I'm trying to get at is um, I see the number of exams that have been taken, um and so I'm looking at like four hundred and ninety-seven. And so I'm assuming that's four hundred and ninety-seven different students.
So those are the exams taken, and so a student could take multiple exams.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I I would be interested in knowing how many students.
Sure.
Um, actually, and.
Full enrollment in.
Uh, well, that that, yeah, take the exam at least once, just just one, that like, yeah, don't, just take it once, you know, like each student that's enrolled in. AP and IB and that, you know, where they've like, how many students are are progressing? I don't, you know, so I would like, I would like to know that as sort of, and also. Sort of a, as a percentage of our population. Is there an ethnic breakdown, like socioeconomic ethnic, like diversity breakdown of these these people that these students? I'd love to see the the numbers and the breakdown of that, because I think these are great programs, and I would love to encourage more students that maybe are not. Fully engaging in these, to engage in these programs more, but of course, that means that we prep them. Earlier, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we can provide those. Um, I'll look into that.
Thank you. Um, okay, anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Post. That was saying.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are moving on, last but not least, annual enrollment and staffing day. It is. The Mr. Ambrosia's.
Can be the D Ambrosia dash.
The the Ambrosia dash.
So dash.
Dash.
Thirty-second. Oh, I can't do that. I can go fast, but. So, good evening, board. This um presentation uh kind of uh outlines our our um demographics regarding our declining enrollment. And as we look forward um and staffing adjustments and supporting students. And preparing for any type of budget um process that we go through in, starting in January. So the first slide um highlights the long-term trend that we've had of declining enrollment, and it also shows the average ADA. So you'll see the ADA is declining and attendance is declining, but that's because enrollment is declining. And so this demographer's report shows a steady decrease in student numbers over recent years. So it starts over at the twenty-ten, and I believe this chart has come for the board, yes. So I won't go too in detail with it. So in twenty-ten, the enrollment was twenty-two thousand, six fifty-five. Now, in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and even till today, we're at seventeen thousand, six thirty-three. So over on the left, you'll have, you'll see the highlight of the twenty-ten, and then over on the right, you'll see twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and twenty-twenty-five. So as you can see, the enrollment is dropping. We've known that, and attendance looks like it's dropping if you look at. Um, the ADA that we're receiving, but the enrollment's dropping, attendance, uh ADA is dropping, but attendance is increasing. So we want to maximize that attendance and that ADA for the enrollment that we have. So understanding this trend is crucial. Because it sets that context for any type of staffing adjustments or any resources that we might adjust um with actual student needs.
Yeah, there's one other item on here, and Vince, it might be best for you to be able to answer it from for them. Yeah, and that's why, why are why are the last two black lines so much lower from for ADA than the lines above it? And that again is a function of the process of getting us through COVID, but it might be good to explain that, because it is a dramatic drop-off, and it's often referred to as the cliff.
Well, yeah, there's two different things that are going on during that period. One was the. Uh, pandemic.
Yeah.
And most districts, their ADA. Uh, went down, so a lot of districts were ninety-five, ninety-six percent, and some of them went down to below ninety percent. Uh, which was, you know, terrible, but now they're starting to come back up. But also. Uh, during the pandemic, they also had a whole harmless for several years. And so even though you were declining in enrollment. The ADA that they allowed you to have was from prior year, and so they, and then they sort of the. They smoothed it out, gave it like, the last part of the pandemic was three-year rolling averages. And so what happened was that one year, I think it was twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah.
Uh, and all of a sudden, you see this big drop of. In your, even though your, it looks like your enrollment is staying steady, but that's a, that's that's. That's not a real number. That's, that was because they had held it. Uh, steady. So anyway, that the the ADA is uh. I think you've come back up to more normal. The levels are at ninety-five percent now, so.
Yeah, our ADA is doing really well as a district. I just wanted to have Vince block that out, because trustee Barb has mentioned earlier this evening. That some of the challenges we're faced with as it relates to the dri- building a budget and and making sure that it's positively certified. Is a result of the one-time funding and this three-year rolling average coming to an end. And oftentimes, those of us who work on budgets a lot refer to this as the funding cliff. So we are now in funding cliff territory, as is all the other school districts in state of California.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. So our next slide highlights the pattern of certificated FTE to student ratio from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-four. Again, this is a slide that you have seen. The top line outlines our FTE. Now, FTE could mean two certificated staff become one, um but we rarely have part-time certificated staff. So typically, that FTE is the actual number of teachers. Uh, the bottom line is the enrollment, and it's important to note, if you look up at the COVID nineteen box up there. That hit in March, and then we hired a quite a lot of staff, certificated and classified. In fact, over the years, our classified and certificated numbers have really maintained since I started in HR eight years ago. So those numbers have been man- have maintained even though the declining enrollment. Might have balanced out a little bit and kept declining, but when COVID hit, we did get a lot of funding for that additional staff. So student to teacher ratio in twenty fourteen, if you go over to the right and down, um. It, you know, a typical, I guess, TK twelve is twenty-four um to one. In twenty fourteen, we were twenty-four point nine to one, and. At this time, we're eighteen point three, and this does include resource teachers, special education, which we've hired a lot of special education teachers. Um, that might not necessarily have. which we've hired a lot of special education teachers that might not necessarily have a full-time class. They're, you know, they're pushing in and supporting students and resource teachers and those things. So this enrollment decline affects our funding and also staffing requirements, because your staffing ratios, class sizes might go down. With classified staff, some of the supervision might be less because you have less students to supervise. And so kind of the key considerations as we're going through and planning for future staffing and budget development is given this enrollment decline, we need to start right sizing our staff to match what the current and projected students for the district might be. And of course, that can't happen all in one time, that has to happen over time. But the goal would be to focus on managing any staffing adjustments, primarily through attrition at this point, until we start to build the budget development with a zero-based budgeting approach, starting for the LCAP development in January, and as we go through that budget development. And so of course, your input is essential as we develop that LCAP. Looking ahead over the next eight months, so that would be from now all the way through the end of the year, we're looking at evaluating positions, we've discussed, we'll provide you regular updates on any staffing and budget developments. But as positions become vacant, we will look at those specific positions and see if we can adjust and not fill those positions, but we'll closely monitor what will that is left behind or adjustments that need to be made. And that's where collaboration with our bargaining groups to monitor and address any workload increases, making sure that things aren't added to somebody's plate. And then, so this is, you know, the commitment to thoughtful, transparent decision-making when it comes to fiscal responsibility and also our staff well-being. So aligning staff decisions with our district goals and student success would be the key. So these are just some of the things, these are the thoughts around the next eight months.
Okay, thank you, Ms. D Ambrosia, sorry, my computer needs to do an update, so. Okay, any questions or comments? Did you need anything from us that can send us a second? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Superintendent comments?
I'm good, because I think we have to return to closed session.
Yes, yes, we do have to return to closed session. So request for future board agenda items, I believe trustee Martin, you brought up the stuff on the budget. And I believe that Dr. Doyle got that.
You wanted two ideas, and I'll, I'll follow up with you before we finalize to make sure it's correct.
And next month, I'm getting my inventory on programs.
Dr. Shigela, I'll be asking you a question.
I'm so sorry, Rachel was talking to me.
Eric, am I going to give my update on programs next month?
Inventory.
So we agreed for December.
You're right, I'm wrong.
And it's going to be two parts, so we'll have it put together for you. But then the part that we agreed on is we also wanted to put it out, like teachers, and see their feedback about those things.
Yes.
So it'll be a two-part thing versus in December.
Anybody else have?
Yeah, please, with regard to AB 1454 and the mandatory reading screener that all K through two students have to give, are you able to give us an update, maybe in the Friday, Friday letter? What, what screener we chose, how long it takes per kid and how we can support our staff to administer those? I hear it's 10 minutes per child, in addition to all the other batteries of assessments that we give. So just maybe in the Friday update and then, because what, when do we have to officially do it by the state law? Could you tell me the date or do you not know?
We'll give you an update on it.
Okay, thank you.
We are, we are on it, we're working on it.
We have a platform, we have a plan, it'll be happening in the winter.
Yeah, and we've been, already started to train staff.
Thank you. Thank you, anyone else?
I would like, I don't know if this should be a form of a report or however, but I would like to know how AI is specifically being used in the district. As far as in the classroom, are, is our counseling services using it? Just, just where is it appearing? And how, like, what departments use it, that sort of thing? And just so that we have kind of a full awareness of, of what's happening.
Trustee Rockoff, would you, is that an agenda item or would you, would putting it in the Friday letter be enough? Or would, do you want to?
I actually, I actually think it would be good for the public to hear, or report, that's what I think.
Never mind.
We can take care of it.
Just wanted to clarify that, thank you, anyone else?
Yes, one last question. On the Friday, we're getting the Friday confidential letters, but I'm not getting the leadership letters anymore.
What we do, we, we can give you the leadership letters, but almost all the information that they have in leadership letters, you get in the Friday letter with the exception of like nitty-gritty things that they do on a weekly basis.
It's like the dates, I want to know.
Dates.
Dates of different meetings.
Okay, we can do that, Eric, we can put that in the, in the confidential, we're just trying to get streamlined for you guys, you don't have to look at the two documents.
Right.
But the main information you get is in the Friday letter, but we can give you dates.
Yeah, I love the leadership letter.
Clarification?
Yes.
Do you want it sit separately to, or do you want it linked from the confidential?
Either way, I'm here.
Okay, we'll link it in the confidential.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay.
And then Sue, too. And when you see it, this was a request of the principals, we have a link at the top for the archive for the year. So even though you haven't got it, you're going to be able to go back and see all of them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, I'd just like to see it, I'd like to know what's going on.
Yep.
Okay, going on to night. Board member reports or comments? Anybody?
My, my only report is it's great to see Adam here tonight, gave me a branch of nerve about five years ago. It's great to see him at, at Rancho Winnebago Vista, but excited to see our board members, you know, the two of them are very active today.
You know, I, I, I'm cautiously optimistic of the cap result, the, especially the English language arts, and especially those 11th grade, that 11th grade jump was pretty significant, so very happy about that. So I wanted to, I wanted to say that.
Well, and one other thing I could add to that is the special ed improvement, we're actually starting to close the gap with special ed, and that's a really big deal. You'll see that reflected when we do the state dashboard, because that's the only area we needed as a district to improve on the data we sped. So it's nice kind of pass off to special ed teachers and others.
Excellent, okay, anyone?
Lastly, thank you, Anna, you did a great job. We wish Sean a happy weekend. I know this was a contentious meeting, I think we all handled it relatively well, better than we have in the past, and I appreciate that and everybody's input. And thank you, staff, as usual, thank you for all your preparation.
Yeah, thank you, staff, okay, anyone else? Okay, I am adjourning the open session portion of this meeting at 9:22. We are going to adjourn it to closed session. I don't know what this is, I see some major.